Well, this thing isn't working, so I'm assuming, let's assume we're on.
I just, yeah, I'm not on TV.
So I'll call us to order the New Market School Board meeting here on the 21st of April 2016. We're about 10 minutes after 6:00 and gonna gather ourselves together around the table in an informal way. Welcome folks that are joining us on the TV. The board is seated here tonight. Mike Kennison, Al Zink, Kimmy Sheldon, and myself, Nathan Lundy. Elizabeth McKinnon can't join us tonight. With us are Pat Valentine, Assistant Superintendent, Chris Andruski, our Assistant Superintendent, and our incoming Superintendent, Mayor Nado. And we're following up now on a conversation that was begun on Wednesday night, the 13th of April, when the board met in tandem with our Facilities Committee to review the educational specifications for both the elementary school and the junior senior high school. And so this is just another 35 or 40 minutes maybe the board will take before our regular meeting at 7:00 to go back to some of my notes and talk through some of the issues that folks may have around the table from that night in front of the EdSpecs, which, let me just say, I love, because it was set on the 13th, we want to say again, an amazing amount of work has gone in to this document, or a series of documents that make up the EdSpec. I don't, I'm sure that some folks watched and they watched the meeting on the 13th that night or subsequently. You have to know if you, you know, even if you look at it and can't tell, you have to know that this takes an enormous amount of time and energy to document all of this, describe it, label it, because there's underlying conversations about the programs we offer at the school, but why we need this space, what do we anticipate doing, what are we doing today, what do we anticipate doing tomorrow, where do we know that our program is going and changing as the needs of education are already dictated and trending? And then part of that, maybe we can talk about tonight and, you know, in any other times that we need to right away, what do we think is changing about education in New Market so that we would be proactive and prepared for that? So, anyway, all that. Anything specific? You guys want to just start ripping through the?
If I could just add here, introduction needing, I think another important aspect is this is a draft.
Yep.
That's to be emphasized, this is a draft. There is, will be an opportunity for public input. We will have a meeting, mostly like we made, with the architect, principals, and our incoming superintendent, and everybody here, where the public can be invited, you know, to have their input. Doesn't mean you can, you can, there's opportunities for input right now, like, you know, emails or calls. There is a mechanism on the Facilities Committee website where people can submit questions and we'll get answers to you. But by all means, the public should feel free to give us input now, you know, come to a meeting or whatever. But it's a work in progress, that needs to be emphasized, it's not, it's not done. So, with that.
I have a question. I've been asked by a number of folks, what is the process that we're going to be going through? You know, what is the, you know, are there specific dates? Are there specific meetings that are going to be set up for the public to come and speak to these, or what's the general overview and the general process?
Well, you spoke last time about having a, you know, a forum in May, one of several forums at different stages of the process now, but, you know, we're certainly discussed. And one idea I thought about is maybe having some open hours, you know, between now and, you know, the next six weeks where, you know, we're open, you know, we're available here on a Thursday or Tuesday, whenever, for a couple hours, a couple school board members, maybe the principals, you know, three or four times, maybe on a Saturday. So we, we gotta give people different opportunities to come in and voice those, those who might be, you know, off camera. I know some people might not feel comfortable coming in in a public forum and being on camera, so I think that's, I would, I would sign up for that myself for the time, if you think that that might be helpful, in addition to the, you know, the televised, you know, public forum that Ingrid will, will join us with, I think that may help.
Might have some, this might help too. The flow chart.
The flow chart, yeah. Yeah, Ingrid.
Laid out month by month what's gonna happen in every stage of the process from now until...
So is that on the website now?
Yes, it is. It's on the facilities page of the website. And also, Mike, as of today, you can also add facilities questions on the first page and on the front page of the website too, so.
Kim will probably talk about more on this in the regular meeting, but we did, met with IT folks this morning, there's some stale stuff on the website, but we also thought it wasn't very, the front page wasn't very accessible to people. We changed it so there's a Facilities Committee link and there's a thing you click on, you can put your questions there and type them in and they come to us and we answer them. It's just one avenue. I think we ought to try, if you have ideas out, certainly entertain them about different ways we can get people involved. Some people are comfortable written, some people are comfortable coming to a meeting, you know, that's gonna be on TV.
I think the question is a good one, because process has been important to us now for the last couple of years, we've talked a lot about process. And I think the thing that, if I go back to comments that I had, I had with some small groups of people, go back even, call it two years ago, maybe shortly after the vote, the failed vote on the, on the proposed building, one of the, one of the comments was, we didn't necessarily know, there were a lot of questions towards the end, there was a lot of miscommunication or misinformation, and one of the things that came up in discussion was, how do you get there? How do you, how do you finish? How do you get to the point where you go to the vote? And there aren't, there aren't a million pressing questions about what is this and how did this come about and where did it come from. So with regard to process, the EdSpec is important because if we all agree that we're going to teach, if we all agreed that we're going to have an automotive repair program at the school, that there's got to be a garage with enough space for safe automotive programming. I don't, I'm not proposing that, I don't think that's something we're doing, but if we were, we'd have to do that. That would have to be in the EdSpec. If it's not in the EdSpec and it shows up in a draft plan later, that would be a surprise and we should ask the question why. By the same, so if it's not in here or if it is in here, this is one step in the process where people should come and ask questions and get involved, because if people want to come and they feel like, I don't understand why you have five second grades, why don't you just have two? We can say, there would be 50 kids in the classroom, or 43 kids, or whatever it would be. That may drive in some of these forums a question of, why can't you have 43 kids in the classroom? There were 75 kids in my classroom and I was a kid and look, I'm smart. So we have to have that dialogue with people, I'm exaggerating for emphasis, right, that those are the things that can come up, because this not only spells out, it's a little simpler at the elementary school, because it spells out classrooms.
Right.
You get to the junior senior high and you really get programs. And I got an example that we can lead into, but I think the process is important and we need to, we need to move our process forward so that we adopt the EdSpecs, because we need that as a foundation to move further with conversations about price and process and method, delivery method, are we building, are we renovating, or what are we doing? But we need to be as deliberate as we can with this and quickly, because we want to get people's feedback, because this will be the document that when we have a question at the 12th hour and somebody says, well, I don't understand that, we say, whoa, that was May.
Right.
And we kinda had to nail that, so now we own it. It is what it is, you know what I mean? We have to have some givens in the process somewhere.
And I think I understood your question now to be the process for getting these done?
Yeah.
Or was that broader?
No, I think, I've, I've entered into a number of conversations recently with people that should know where we're going on that don't, that are really, I had one today that was very lengthy and it was, the information the person was trying to retrieve was incorrect. And they're very involved. And I like your idea, Mike, I think, and maybe it's something that we can work on. Kim is really the communication guru, but I think if we were to have every other week a two-hour, come in and talk to us.
I think, I think with this, from a communication standpoint, we have to throw 72 different things at the wall to see what sticks.
Yeah, exactly.
Because it's gonna, it's going to work for the website for some people, personal meetings are gonna be better for others, mailings.
That's at the library.
Yes, all sorts of things.
Yeah.
I think we have to really, in this timeline, come up with our own communication plan going in sync with that so that we can get the information out based upon the EdSpecs.
And maybe even to the point, I know this may have sounded ridiculous, but even to the point where we put a blinking sign at the end of the town that says, information leading tonight, please, 5 to 8.
Yeah.
You know?
Right.
Yeah.
Because it is so comprehensive, it's hard for even us to keep up with hearing. Anyway, I don't want to be a dead horse, but.
I think it's good that, you know, we have the input from the principals and the committee that's already gone through it, and we have the executive summary that explains the details of these things that someone might be more inclined to read than the entire EdSpec document, so I'm grateful to have that too and accessible to people.
And as a general matter, I think it's important for us to mold this enough, you know, as a Facility Committee and, you know, as a school board, so we can present something that's workable, you know, for public debate. And so.
Thank you. Want to cut teeth on the elementary? Sean's not with us, but.
He's doing kindergarten, open house.
That's good, we need him to be doing that. These are, these are some things. I have the notes, I had a chance to talk briefly to Chris.
Yep.
I did talk to Sean, but let me throw in a couple to get us warmed up. As we're going through the elementary school the other night, we, on page three, bottom page two, top page three, we dropped in on a series of spaces. These are small spaces, 120 square foot spaces for reading slash Title I. So I didn't ask it then, but my question in general is, over the course of a day, am I really filling six spaces consistently? Now, again, I want to ask these questions, I'm gonna ask, I got a couple questions like it at the junior senior high, where we're not talking about a huge space, but 120 feet is a bedroom, 120 square feet, it's 12 by 10, some of us may have bigger bedrooms, but, you know, this is a kid's bedroom, 12 by 10. It's not a small room, and I'm talking about six of them, am I really using six of those breakout spaces all through the course of a seven-hour school day? And, and as I'm contemplating this, is what was it that we pegged to 120, oh, not to 120, what was it that pegged us to six? Is it that we have six tutors or six teachers? Or do we really have a caseload that suggests that all through the day I might need six rooms? Again, that can be rhetorical, because of course in Sean's absence, you know.
I think I should respond to some of that.
Well, because the other one was special ed instruction and we had, I think, five breakout spaces.
I have a hard time labeling them as reading or Title I or special ed. If you could make them fewer, I don't think you could all six. I think if we talk to reading and Title I, that would be maybe just individual rooms for each tutor. What if you talk in speaking of them as possible sites for interventions or for individual teacher tool, that kind of thing? By label, it's the same thing with labeling, someone said to me, I saw there were only four grade fours, does that mean that? No, it's a classroom, so can you write primary classroom? Can you write intermediate classroom? By being so finite, some people look at this as the last word.
But it really was pegged, for instance, I'm sure fourth grade was pegged to the number of fourth grade classrooms we have today, right?
And I get that, but they're classrooms, they're primary classrooms.
They're classrooms.
And there are some people who read them.
Right.
For example, if you have a second grader and you read going down the line, they're only gonna have four fourth grade classrooms. I have 102 kids in my second graders, you know, where, are they gonna put 44 in a row? They had 70 when I was there, and special ed instruction as well. For Title I, it's a little different, because it's a federally funded program and there are restrictions on how many people I actually can put into a program. But I think by labeling that as a reading or special ed room or Title I room, you could just say it's a general resource room kind of thing. I don't know if resource is the word I'm looking for.
No, we talked about intervention spaces or spaces.
Intervention spaces, that kind of thing.
But yes, you might be able to produce a couple as you work through that.
The day we took our, the day we had the district, the day we had our candidates for superintendent in, we were walking through the elementary school, and it was one of the first times that I can remember since I had kids, a little older than they are, and I was in the building, and I don't remember that, there were people in the hallway at every door. Every classroom had a specialist of some sort with a child, sitting in tiny little chairs, with or without a desk, someone with a clipboard, right outside the door.
And in the cafeteria.
So I get that we need the spaces. I, you know, part of the due diligence of my own mind was, I wanted to ask, how do we peg that number? And maybe if I.
And it could fluctuate.
If I led you, and it might go up and down, and if I lead to special ed instructional spaces and I saw five of them, my lead was, wow, we got five special ed teachers, that means I gotta have five special ed rooms, I've essentially just, I've just created offices. And they don't want us to move in that direction, because it feels like a lot of special ed work ought to be done in the classrooms with our teachers and the rest of the student body, but not everything can be done that way. I understand that's not the only, the only delivery method, so, so I wanted to ask the question. And then the continuation of that is, I don't know how much time there is going into Zen Den as a language, as a label that was used in both buildings, but I like de-escalation a lot better. I might even have called it small conference rooms, or I might have called it something else, because I don't know that, I think, I imagine that the spaces could be used for lots of things. I hope that something that feels like it approximates a momentary in-school suspension wants to not be the focus of construction, so.
I think it might be helpful if we go through this, is to actually look at the particular items, and if we don't think we need them in a final version, that we have to move and follow rather.
And I wasn't with Sean when he did the presentation.
Talking at a high level, we need that as well. Does that make sense? I mean, we gotta, we gotta make some decisions.
Shouldn't we have Sean? Seems awful funny.
Well, I mean, we don't, we don't need to sign up for it until we run it by them, but I mean, we did, I mean, I think, I think we gotta come out, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think we gotta come out with, you know, some sort of specifics as well. I mean, at least what we think they might be. I'm silent on this topic, because I'm not the expert.
Me too, we're not gonna hear anything from Mayor. I don't want to, I don't want to say that we need six or we need four, but I want somebody to look at that. My sense the other night was, sharp pencil, we've already threaded, you know, been through this and we've already pared it back, okay, fine, let me just ask, if, if really four of those rooms would do, because somebody different's using them every 40 minutes, then, then we could look at less there.
So maybe this would help, because I know, I have two reading rooms in my, my building, because the purpose is I have two reading teachers teaching in a classroom.
Yep.
And what we do, specialized instruction for students who struggle with reading, you have two teachers teaching two different programs and it needs to be quiet. That's why that dedicates based, based on the number of kids that we service throughout the day. And I would anticipate that's how Sean did it. You know, when you're looking at it and it says reading room, when we build these specs, it's built on what your program has now, so I'm sure that's what those spaces are, you saw 205, I think, square feet or 190.
190.
And I think he was building out a program for the future, because reading is so important.
It is.
I'm, I'm reading into what he would do. Again, you can call that specialized space in a summary sheet for, for the public, but that's how he was building it out.
Actually, if you look at it.
There are about a dozen 120 square interventions. Yes, that's right.
Well, I think I, refreshing my own recollection, because I think I pointed this out at the last meeting, the existing space is greater than the space requested, it's just broken up.
Differently, yes.
Right.
Because right now, the rooms are different sizes.
Right.
800, 600, 800.
700 and change in requested spaces, but, okay. Maybe, let, let, can we lead that one, that path, and maybe you can circle back with Sean and discuss that, that issue? Thanks.
Do you want me to do the reading in Title I spaces and special ed, please?
Yeah.
And the line?
Yes, the line.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what, just sort of, for public and our knowledge, what are the, what are the things that you've seen there in the, in the special ed we have down here?
I think they, I think it's, we pretty much have one case manager per grade level, and I think they're looking for an isolated space to be able to work, you know, if they're not working in a classroom, we pull, some of the spaces that they need are bigger than others because of equipment. You know, there are specialized pieces of equipment that have to come with certain students. So I think that's.
Group versus forum.
Of course, you know, because if one or two children have the same skills set, that's different than someone who needs like OT, PT throughout the day. On a, on a regular daily basis, you know, we have children who have specialized equipment, you've seen it in the hallways when you.
All of those.
You know, and that's what they're looking, is to get it out of the hallways and into rooms where it's, it's used and stored, you know, it can be kept there, it's moving it, you know, every place that you need it is, some of it's calibrated, so you have to take time to set it up again, make sure everything's working.
And again, it seems like with this category, I'm on, just on page three midway down, I think it, it looks like spaces are being split up, and it looks like existing square footage is being split up.
For example, in a special, I can think of a couple of the special ed case managers, there are two special ed case managers, they each have a desk, and there's probably two smaller tables within the, within the space for them to work with students. And like Chris said, you sometimes want that space to be more quiet and less distracting in a classroom setting for whatever they need. Some of the spaces are bigger than others at the elementary school, that's part of, you know, you can fit, I can think in one room where two case managers and two desks fit okay, not perfectly, but then there is a classroom where.
63 square feet?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you open the door and you hope no one's standing on the other side, because you can't all fit in.
Well, so here's, I guess where I understand it was, because I want to, I want to say out loud, I, I understand the special ed effort, you know, one-on-one or one-on, one-on multiple endeavor, there's also the reality though, that without students, or when the students aren't with them, they've got compliance issues, they've got the IP to be written, they've got to review and monitor, they've got, you know.
They have to have a space.
They have to have a space. It wasn't clear to me, the special ed instructional spaces of 140 square feet per, per, per person. The notes talk maybe about what is, not about what would be.
That's what currently is in.
But it sounds like, here's 140 square feet, we're gonna put a desk in here for the case manager, we're gonna put a chair, a table, we're gonna be able to work with a child. But then I get to special ed staff office, and I've got 350 square feet where I'm gonna stick seven case managers and their desks in an office area, of course, six case managers and a preschool. And I scratched my head and I thought, okay, which is it? Do we want individual spaces where I can have my space, have my office, have my desk, get my work done, and have small group instruction or one-on-one instruction time? Or do I want a bullpen environment where all of the case managers are sharing their office time? And maybe we do need both, but I wondered that out loud, or I wondered that in my notes, I should say.
I spoke with Sean briefly about that question today, because I was, I was somewhat wondering, I mean, his, his take was that staff felt that the opportunity to collaborate across grade levels would be really valuable. And so I, I think of those spaces similarly to the way Pat described the intervention spaces for reading and math and Title I, that really they're more intervention spaces and maybe you have one in the kindergarten hallway and one near the first grade classrooms and one in second and third and fourth.
My file cabinet, my computer would be in the office.
Correct.
In the bigger areas.
Everybody, everybody.
So that everybody has access, we only have to buy one practice, not one.
But those intervention spaces, to your point, might be used by a special education teacher for a period of time, and then by a speech pathologist, and then by a math intervention tutor.
So do you see some overlap in that, in year that can be explained?
I think that's the question for Sean.
For reading, for Title I, and special ed and speech, all of them.
Actual service delivery, what does that look like in terms of need for existing?
How many? Okay.
Just looking forward, I think we ought to come back at the next, have another one of these at the next school board meeting.
We're not gonna get there.
People, yeah, people, no, I see that already, but, you know, everybody's leaving next week on vacation, so we're all out, you know, just looking forward.
So I hit another one, so page four, here's, oh, page five, this data. My question was, the data manager, wherever the data manager is.
She has an office, she shares.
Any reason why, as we contemplate the future, that the data manager is in?
I got it right here.
District data, there you go.
Page four.
Yeah, page four. Why is it that the data manager is at, at the elementary school? Why is the data manager not necessarily in the central office? And so, not that we have room in our current central office, but as we contemplate the future, of course, we've only got 85 square feet for her, so it's not like she's, again...
She shares right now a room with math interventionist people, and it, Amy, when she needs a spot, she comes down to the conference room, which is right next to where my office is, and she will sit there and, you know, we'll talk. But because she works at both buildings, she finds spaces wherever she can.
Well, now we go back to the intervention spaces, which at times might be, you know, a functional space for, for a staff member who wants to drop in as specialists, who isn't necessarily engaging in one or one, but still needs a space to be able to get some work done and, and network with people in the building.
I think this whole brings us back to the point that I think Mayor has brought up at the, at the meeting last week, the whole flex space concept. And really, you know, I know that was approached, Chris, in your, your presentation and everything, but I think we really need to look at that at the elementary school too, because it could be any number of things.
In any, any number of days, I guess.
Or hours or whatever.
The only other one I thought could use an explanation was, there's a teacher break room and a teacher work room, and I thought on behalf of the teachers, it might be important to, to bear it out, that one of them is a space for, I can't say R and R, because it's not like rest, but.
No.
One of them is, one of them is a private space for them to, to take a break.
Yes.
Another one is where, mimeograph machine, which we don't have anymore maybe, but, you know, the photocopiers going and.
The laminators.
The laminators too hot, don't touch it, et cetera, that's the work room.
Right now, that's currently, we have the phones up, you know, there's a phone there.
Yep.
That's where they, with lunch, and if you have a lunch where, you know, a pair of professionals and, and all staff of that lunch period that has it off is in the room, it's pretty full, you know, and we do it, pair of volunteers that come in and out, and somewhat, I mean, it used to be a very big space, we thought, but we have more people.
I did, first grade, second grade, first grade, cooking, maybe?
Second grade.
Second grade for Jan.
Jan Dufour, you did second grade, yes.
Jan Dufour, Jan Dufour, second grade.
Yes.
I was in an out teacher room a lot in that year.
Yes. That's, that's one of the prizes of being Mr. Porsmore, she gets to, they do cooking once a week. It's part of a math or a reading lesson, and still remember Thunder Cake.
That was all I had in the elementary, I was done, a general question, but I think I addressed this maybe to, better to architects, but.
Oh, one thing, and Alice, you mentioned that the mezzanine spaces before, and now, I'm looking at page six, but, and there are, and I think Sean spoke to this at the, at the last meeting, that, well, in not so many words, the, the stuff they have stored up there now, these three people, like code, I guess I want to drill down and understand that a little better, you know, is the fire department telling us this? But also ask if Banwell, what the situation is with that, like, they have been up there, they have seen that space.
But part of it, part of it's.
Sprinkles?
I don't know if it's sprinkled.
I don't know, but part, part of it has, part of it has some HVAC equipment up there.
Yeah.
So I don't know frankly what, what the rule is with that, but I'm sure Banwell knows and.
Yeah, I hope, I hope they do. I mean, this is, is a huge space, mezzanine, that's empty except for junk and HVAC and stuff, and I would hope they get on there real quick, because that is so essential to the study to understand what could or could be done.
As it sits right now, that's not, it's not instructional space, but it is, especially if it needed to be sprinkled, that'd be a whole lot cheaper than many other alternatives could be.
I think, I think it is sprinkled, but, but that aside, I'd like to, I think we need to get them in there.
They're actually, I'll talk about this more later, but they're doing a existing condition study next week, and school's out, so they'll be in there.
Great, great.
So, yeah.
Yep.
It is a kind of space.
You're talking upstairs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Used to be all storage.
It's, it's on work.
We were told to clean.
Fire?
Yes.
Yeah, so we.
And it could have been a lot of combustibles, though.
Well, people do this, the teacher storage, if I've done, done a unit in the fall and I don't need it again till next fall, it went up in my bin that said grade two. Since you don't have a lot of room in your room.
Okay.
Or you're short like me and you can't read, so talk.
We'll just hire twelve people.
One other small piece that Sean and I talked about, which is right now those spaces labeled as a computer lab, and I know this came up in conversation, but. Sorry, page two.
Page two, sorry.
And I, I think again, going back to existing, it is a computer lab right now, but I think moving forward, it may be a computer lab, but it's likely gonna be some sort of makerspace moving forward, so to label it with the, towards the future as opposed to just the current use, again, to your point of.
Makerspace.
Makerspace.
Maker, maker, I tell you what, in the world of STEM, you talk about, please.
Yes, I'll have you share an article, but they're, they're essentially flexible spaces that are really open for kids to do design and engineering and applying those technology skills and mathematics.
Not just simplicity.
So it's not computer stations?
No.
No, and you might have some computer stations, because you may be doing some coding work to program a robot that you're building or working with.
So maybe if, with your help, Sean, could augment that explanation? Would that be helpful, I think. Thanks.
Well, the only other thing that I was thinking within that regard was, we have, we've named what we have. We have hotspots over here on the left of what we have and what we want. And maybe, it can only get so complicated and, you know, you need people to be able to understand and read it. But I just wondered if there was ever thought about, there's ever thought about existing, existing need, I mean, existing space being separated, and when we talked about the needs, we put a different label on.
Primary classroom.
Primary classroom, but we can say it's first grade, but, but in the future, we know we need a primary classroom. We need fourteen of them.
We need fourteen.
We don't necessarily need five of these and four of these, we need fourteen. So off the one we just talked about, currently it's a computer lab, but the seven hundred and fifty square feet we think we need moving forward might be labeled makerspace, not computer lab. And you could distinguish, because that'll be important at some point when we're talking, like I said, about why is that in the plan? Because here, well, I never saw a makerspace anywhere in Spec. Well, it was, it was a replacement for, you know.
And that speaks to the programming piece.
Sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry, no, it speaks to how we look at programming, you know, we have to plan for programming in this, you know, many school districts, not for today, not for tomorrow, five to six years from now, looking at what the state's gonna ask from us, what we need to make sure our students are getting the best education they can, you know, and those needs change.
If I can, you know, I'll do something on the elementary.
I got a couple of questions. One of the obvious things that's, that's come up time and time again is the cafeteria. It's just not, it's just not working. Where it's starting at ten-thirty and ten-eight, one-thirty, yeah, six o'clock, I mean, that's a, that's a no-brainer.
Are the ten to first kids, are they still hungry?
The kitchen, to me, is kind of a, kind of a no-brainer to media center. I don't, I'm not sure what that is, but what about the gym? While we can say it's easy, I mean, the comment here, children cannot run during gym class, is the why we need it. How do we get our, how does a person get his, his or her arms around what appropriate gym size for a? Now, it says here, a hundred and ten square foot per pupil minimum. How, how do we, how do we come up with the seven thousand?
Valet comes from that DOE, drag, you know, that were in the materials last time. That, that's what that, that preference is, like one-ten square.
I asked, I know, okay, but I, I'm, I'm wanting on the basic assumptions. So you take the number of students in the building and multiply it by one-ten?
You actually take it by the core number, I'll top one, six oh five?
Yeah.
So not by enrollment, but we want a building for that core, she was describing.
I asked Ingrid this, sitting there, because I was doing the math in the calculator in a meeting, and if I take six oh five multiplied by a hundred and ten square feet, I get sixty-six and a half thousand square feet, not seven.
Yeah.
And so I said, is it ten or eleven square feet per kid, maybe? Because if I took, if I take, I gotta go back in, if I take the seven thousand that they're recommending and I divide it by six oh five, hold the whole eleven point five square feet for a kid. Yeah, but you can't assume all the kids are all in the gym playing at the same time.
No, but, but I think that that goes back to the state standard. I think that number is, how do you estimate, like, like we've seen at the library, media center?
Yep.
Eighteen hundred square foot minimum or forty square foot per pupil?
Whatever.
Okay, but let's stick with the gym for now.
So go back, right, but, so there are those standards.
So are, well, what is the standard?
Well, again, I think.
Is it, is it a standard?
We should define the standard for me.
Yeah, we have to see. I mean, is the assumption that ten percent of the population's gonna be in there one time?
It looks like it's built for about two classes to be in there simultaneously, assuming the capacity of thirty, it would be about sixty kids. Assuming you could schedule two PE classes simultaneously.
A divider of some sort. You would have two gym classes going.
And do we, do we have that now? Do we have?
But if you were at the core capacity of six hundred kids, or do you need PE requirements for non-physical activity, you could envision a time where you would need that.
And that would make sense. That's all I'm asking. I mean, that's.
Maybe that need, that, that's a bit of a space, and there's only two sentences there. I think that is flushed out.
Well, I mean, well, Merritt, it just makes, makes great sense to me. You'd have two classes of thirty each in a gym, yeah.
Which is your max, sort of state guideline.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's what we want, get the juniors and your high school to be, have a sixth grade and a high school class of fifty-five kids in there, bigger kids, simultaneous.
So then we'd look at the schedule and we'd say, okay, how frequently are those during the day? How frequently are sixty kids gonna be in that? And my guess is you're gonna have a lot of days where there's nobody in there.
Or you could reorganize how you build your specials.
Yeah.
And you could do a double PE in there.
I don't know, but, yeah.
That's, that's what I would recommend if I was an elementary school teacher.
Right, or, you know, currently, you know, if the weather is poor and you're, you know, indoor recesses, everybody in their classroom at their desk, but you might be able to build in more opportunities for physical activity even on those days with that capacity.
In the morning, that's the, the cafeteria and the gym are the two places we put students to wait before the bell rings. Yeah. That's a lot of students to sit in the cafeteria and, and gym's very crowded, because they want to be able to do something.
Okay, let's see, I'm not, I'm not on the specs from that standpoint, but I'd like to understand that.
Who's in that?
How frequent, how, during the day, how frequently is that two thirty size classroom people gonna be in there? Or is there a different way to schedule it so there aren't?
Currently, there's none, but you could schedule a different.
I, yeah, so, you know, we need to dig into that, because I can't, I'm looking at the statistics and I'm not seeing.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing gymnasium flop out with a, with a, anything definitive. Maybe I'll talk elementary. So I wanna give us five minutes, a little gap in between for, to get a couple of things done and transition for a regular meeting, but you wanna start on the junior senior high? Because the first question that I've got goes back to what we were saying in our introductory comments about program, for instance. So, on page three? I heard so good. Most probably. On page three, I listened to the script from the generalized space. We talked about a dark room for photography. And I thought, a dark room, like, what am I gonna say? You know, working the chemicals, a little black box, and you know, stick your hands in there, you can't see, the lights are turned off, and you develop the. My experience with, with, with photography today is, hey, and then we, we take a thousand of them and we throw away all at one. And, and then we send that to the high-res laser printer. And it doesn't make it right, it just makes it what it is. And, and even having a program in photography with a dark room and, and all of the chemicals and stuff, sounds like an added expense that doesn't necessarily get to the commercial application, because today, as a hobby, you might go do that stuff, but as a, as a business model or as a career, you're gonna use digital, because you can take all of these wedding pictures and maybe chuck a bunch of them out and it never costs you a dime, rather than your time, blah, 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 blah. But that's a programmatic decision. And when I mentioned this to an art teacher that I work with, I, I killed the forty-five minutes listening to the. So, I mean, we talked a little bit about this. That's a program conversation.
Sure. I had a friend, as an, an agent, who applied for a job at the White House as a photographer. And one of the things that he had to do post-college education was actually work out his film and show that he had the, the skills to do it. So, you know, I think we really do need to look at, you know, educating ourselves on the reality of what needs to go into the programmatic things to help kids be as marketable as they can once they leave our school.
And, and so you will, you go talk to a net who teaches the classroom.
Sure.
And it's more than just taking a black and white picture. It's the history of, of photography, really, how it started and how it progressed into digital, but also the chemicals and how you have to, to mix the right chemicals, so it brings in the science behind it. So there's a lot of different content that goes into the dark room, to the photography classes, how do you take care of the, of the computers? And what are you shooting, different lightings, which still applies to our cameras, you know, there are new age cameras that are on our phone. So we talked about that, and, and, you know, a lot of schools are, you know, did go away from it, other schools are wishing they didn't. So we talked to other schools that, that progressed, and this was an area that, that she felt very, very much needed in regards to how we teach, how we, we do digital photographs today, maybe in that history piece. That's why that's it.
I, you know, I can't decide, I mean, I can't weigh in on it, otherwise I'd say ask the question, so. Ask a, ask an artist, boy, that's all I, they'll tell you, 'cause that's like.
I had a question. I looked through this thing five times to try to find the wood shop, and I can't find it. So we must call a wood shop.
Industrial arts.
Industrial arts.
What page?
Probably under specialized classrooms. Tech ed classroom.
Page five.
Page five.
So you have tech ed classroom and tech ed lab?
Almost halfway done. One more than halfway.
So what is, okay.
So that, yeah, that's, that's a fair point, that doesn't, doesn't jump out as a, I used to call it a metal shop.
It's a wood shop?
Wood shop.
There's wood shop in there?
What else?
Uh, we do CAD design, that's a class that we offer, that's what you offer in the.
Yeah, metalwork?
Yeah. Uh, we don't do any metal. The machinery that we have in there currently is designed for wood.
And so you've got two spaces, you've got, you've got a classroom where we sit, we do safety training, we do, you know, we can do textbook, we can do textbook work, we can do computers, that's where CAD would be done. And then having done your safety training, then you can go out in the lab space and actually work a machine where you put the glasses on and there's dust.
So maybe, maybe in that, just, you know, in the, in the explanation section, just maybe use that in terms of what that is. Because it does like tech ed labs, it seems kind of broad to the.
Can't something in school told you nowadays, wood shop?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're required, it's different, you could do electrical as part of it. They give you a list of different classes, you have to offer their cover of that, power and energy and the other one.
That could be.
Yeah.
That are taught in that section.
So it could be an HVAC lab?
Um, not as much, because that's specialized equipment, and that's something that would be more at a technical school.
Okay.
That's a great question.
We have S T, which has got, yeah, that's what, that's more of a program, it's got a building trades.
Welding.
It's got a welding program, it's got.
Do they have woodworking?
Uh, they, that'd be their construction trades, they go out and.
Yeah, they actually build.
They build homes and decks.
But they don't do necessarily building the coffee table and kind of board the floor.
So we're gonna run short of time, but we wanna connect to this. I wanted to make two comments. One was, I think the same conversation that we had about the elementary with the multiple breakout spaces that can be called intervention, we should look at that and wonder out loud and then, and by the same token, maybe add in, and I, and again, I mentioned this to Chris, I saw the athletic director with a space, I saw department heads, science chair, Lewis chair with spaces, and there were some others. I don't remember, maybe only a couple of them, so I could go, throw it back here, just categorically. If I'm teaching and I'm teaching five sections in a seven block or an eight block, is there a teaching six, I don't know, what, teach five?
Six, over two days.
Over two days. I got a couple of, I got empty blocks. As a department head, is it different? With an extra, no? So I have a limited exposure to actually need the space, and so, and is it that we all need the space at the same time, because we've got the same blocks off? Or is it that this, we don't necessarily have to have designated space for the A D and the department chair and so on and so forth? We could have half this many and there would always be, kind of like a one-to-one. We need one-to-one computers, so every kid's got a computer. Or we could have ubiquitous computers, so that every kid that needs a computer has one when he or she needs it. We don't necessarily have to have a bunch of equipment running around, not being used. It's just a different perspective. So you don't have to answer the question, but if we could chase it and kind of answer it in the spec move forward, did we need all of those? And they're small spaces, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna make the time, but I wanna make sure it's, you know, we're doing the due diligence.
Page, um, I'm page seven. This is a, as I gather from being involved in, you know, with architects and talking to other communities, the auditorium. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this suggestion. I'm gonna suggest that we carve that out and we'll have a, have a separate consideration of it and probably why it's so, that if it survives, should be at the end of public input in our session, that if, if, if it's something we include, it's included on a separate Warren article. Because, because what I'm gathering, you know, not only from this community but externally, is that those types of things can often tank a whole, a whole thing. As much as, you know, it can be argued both ways, you know? So, not that we don't consider it altogether, but we carve it out, we have Ingrid study it, whether it goes in there or goes across the street eventually, there's, there's a, there's a plan for it. And, and we carve it out, because I just think that has a potential of sinking the whole, whole thing. And I'm entertained other thoughts on that.
And I, I'm sorry, I was guilty of thinking.
And that's not to say it's not worthy.
I wasn't listening as closely as I should have, but you and I talked about this previously. I remember the conversation being had the last time around about a space that once was called an auditorium, later was called an assembly space or a hall. I think we don't wanna lose sight of, there must be a space where we can have school gathered.
And town events too.
And town events, and so, and so, you know, if we're, you know, if we're, whether it's renovating the existing space or it's something new, the gymnasium is important, because that's a meeting space where we can gather. You need to have an assembly with a school wide. The gym right now wouldn't hold all seven grades. Would it? Yeah, maybe. Would you put all seven in there? And so, and so maybe that helps with that. If, if there's needs to be additional space, contemplate that there is a bare bones meeting space, a room that's big enough, and let the, let the Warren articles speak to, okay, separate articles speak to upgrades to that. Do you add in a stage? Do you put in, because I think that part of what the fear is about auditorium is, if you've been to one as a taxpayer, you think stage, lighting, sound, drapes, curtains, you know, and you start to have these comfy seats, like I'm at the movie theater. And, and you can really exaggerate some of what that space could be limited to. It could be a very functional and custom, and comfortable space where we could get good things done without it necessarily becoming a huge expense. And, and maybe there's, maybe it's not just carve it out a hundred percent. Maybe it's, what can be done as a bare bones so that we have space? And then what you carve out is, do you, how much do you wanna invest in growing that space to make it? But I like your idea of trying to not let that be what kind of washes the whole notion, the whole project.
I, I totally agree with that, Mike, also, but I think we also need to look at how those spaces relate to the programatic goals that we have as well. Because.
Art, music.
Yes, art, music, drama. All those things are part of creating the most well-rounded student that we can.
Absolutely.
And so I think, you know, I, I definitely would not want that to be the barrier to the greater good, but I think we need to look at it from that side too.
It had a lot of angles to it, I mean, somebody, and you always get in trouble with analogies, but I'm gonna get in trouble right now. So somebody came up to me at a meeting, at the meeting last week and said, you know, if I go to the dump two times a year, like, I don't go and buy a pickup truck. You know, and that's.
That was their analogy.
That's a real exaggeration, but I mean, you know, there are other options. If we have a big assembly or there are other auditoriums in the area, we might be able to rent out versus, you know, I, I don't know the answer to these things, but I think it, it, it's almost a facilities question in and of itself, you know? I mean, that when you start considering an auditorium, because they are so expensive, potentially, depending on how you build it out, but, but. I think we need to, you know, flesh out a little bit more what, what the actual program schedule need is, you know, in, in all events, and, you know, whether it's, it's put on as a separate Warren article or whatever, but I, I, well, it's, I just think it might help to carve it out.
Derek, we've always said there's so many layers and so many questions, you could murder yourself, you know, in, in too many variations, too many details. If we're, if we end up renovating in a space where we are, finding space and building into that an auditorium space might not be as easy as if you, as, as if you're building a new space and you add an auditorium in it. But one of the answers could be, for instance, that an auditorium could be a self-standing reality that was confronted by the community later. It could be on, if we renovate, it could be on another piece of land somewhere where it could have appropriate parking and it could be a going concern and, and it could have attached to it whatever else wanted to happen at that time. Let that grow organically separate from this. If the gymnasium that remains and can be made as part of the renovation will satisfy all of the arts and things moving forward. all of the arts and things moving forward, so we don't necessarily, you know, hold back those programs as well.
Either the stage area that exists.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, because there may be something limited there that may satisfy us in the meeting. All right, we should, we should make a plan maybe for our May, our May meeting to, to do this again.
Yaviki.
Keep this conversation going. Sorry, five thirty. You asked for five thirty and I said, I did six, but I'm sorry about that.
So, May.
So, we'll talk about the May meeting.
Just, just to, just to cap it again, for people who might not be, be here, have been here at the beginning, this is, this is a work in progress, it's a draft, you know, we haven't not made any concrete decisions by anything.
Yep.
And so.
Thank you.
I'll assume that we're on.
to the microphone, not to speak, but so that the board can meet with you and talk to you.
This is connected, but it's taking forever. I shouldn't take this. Okay. Thank you. And I'll move to middle school. We don't often get to talk about students in individual sports since we don't have too many individual sports at New Market Junior Senior High School. But this young lady's been competing in gymnastics for as long as I've known her. She's friends with my daughter, and she's always zipping around, bopping around. And no wonder. She finished first in the state for the age group 12-plus at Level Four. And she is a 12-year-old, so she's at the bottom. So 12-year-olds and higher can compete in this at the U.S. Junior Olympic New Hampshire State Meet. So I'd like to bring up Lily Buno, as she was number... Bono! Sorry. Sorry, Connor. Glad Connor's here to correct me.
Love him.
Lily, come on up.
Lily, if he steps away, is there enough space there?
I told her I was gonna do it. She said, "Please don't."
I could do a conch wheel once, but I think I'd fracture that again.
So I'll turn it over to you, because I know you guys like to talk.
Yeah, so why don't we take just a five-minute break, ask all those students to come up to the microphone, not to speak, but so that the board can meet with you and talk to you.
This is connected, but it's taking forever. I shouldn't take this. Okay. Thank you. And I'll move to middle school. We don't often get to talk about students in individual sports since we don't have too many individual sports at New Market Junior Senior High School. But this young lady's been competing in gymnastics for as long as I've known her. She's friends with my daughter, and she's always zipping around, bopping around. And no wonder. She finished first in the state for the age group 12-plus at Level Four. And she is a 12-year-old, so she's at the bottom. So 12-year-olds and higher can compete in this at the U.S. Junior Olympic New Hampshire State Meet. So I'd like to bring up Lily Buno, as she was number... Bono! Sorry. Sorry, Connor. Glad Connor's here to correct me.
Love him.
Lily, come on up.
Lily, if he steps away, is there enough space there?
I told her I was gonna do it. She said, "Please don't."
I could do a conch wheel once, but I think I'd fracture that again.
So I'll turn it over to you, because I know you guys like to talk.
Yeah, so why don't we take just a five-minute break, ask all those students to come up to the microphone, not to speak, but so that the board can meet with you and talk to you.
This is connected, but it's taking forever. I shouldn't take this. Okay. Thank you. And I'll move to middle school. We don't often get to talk about students in individual sports since we don't have too many individual sports at New Market Junior Senior High School. But this young lady's been competing in gymnastics for as long as I've known her. She's friends with my daughter, and she's always zipping around, bopping around. And no wonder. She finished first in the state for the age group 12-plus at Level Four. And she is a 12-year-old, so she's at the bottom. So 12-year-olds and higher can compete in this at the U.S. Junior Olympic New Hampshire State Meet. So I'd like to bring up Lily Buno, as she was number... Bono! Sorry. Sorry, Connor. Glad Connor's here to correct me.
Love him.
Lily, come on up.
Lily, if he steps away, is there enough space there?
I told her I was gonna do it. She said, "Please don't."
I could do a conch wheel once, but I think I'd fracture that again.
So I'll turn it over to you, because I know you guys like to talk.
Yeah, so why don't we take just a five-minute break, ask all those students to come up to the microphone, not to speak, but so that the board can meet with you and talk to you.
This is connected, but it's taking forever. I shouldn't take this. Okay. Thank you. And I'll move to middle school. We don't often get to talk about students in individual sports since we don't have too many individual sports at New Market Junior Senior High School. But this young lady's been competing in gymnastics for as long as I've known her. She's friends with my daughter, and she's always zipping around, bopping around. And no wonder. She finished first in the state for the age group 12-plus at Level Four. And she is a 12-year-old, so she's at the bottom. So 12-year-olds and higher can compete in this at the U.S. Junior Olympic New Hampshire State Meet. So I'd like to bring up Lily Buno, as she was number...
From Mike Rowe, if you know Mike Rowe from Dirty Jobs. He ran into this guy that we're talking about. This is a book. This guy's also an author and there's a documentary out on him. His name's Staff Sergeant Travis Mills, retired from the United States Army. He's one of only five. He's actually number four, quadruple amputees to survive such horrific injuries from the Afghan and Iraq war. Incredible message he goes out. He has a message of never give up, never quit type philosophy, type attitude. Doesn't consider himself any type of injured or anything like that. Mike Rowe, if you read that, and that's, if you don't have time to read it, but read it at home, I encourage you to read it. He has a foundation. All money raised that we do from this event's gonna go towards his foundation, which is to assist wounded warriors or warriors that have been injured. Incredible message. I'll play, I have just two little videos. I don't want to take up everyone's time here tonight with this. So I'll play two, couple minute videos.
You got it. My job was military. I loved it, you know? Working with soldiers every day doing my job was like the greatest for me. Going on my wife and kid was the best, you know? And I had a really good life mapped out. I was really doing well. People call me hero, but I'm not sure what part of it makes me a hero. I just had a normal day at work. I turned up. About six seconds, I guess, later, and woke up. I'm in a key. I need more people over here, put on target again! About 20 seconds, see, I turn it gets on, both legs, both arms. I guess the last thing I could say is my baby girl, I might ever see her again. You know, I'm out. Getting teared up a little, sorry. But I'm really worried about what life's gonna be like afterwards, you know, with all this. Tell them I'm gonna get out of here in 10 months. They're gonna say no lie. You know, what's your big rush? I said, hey Doc, what's behind you? And pictures up, me and my wife, my daughter. And I have a family. Like, I live in a hospital bed. Get me out of here. My goal is to let them know I keep working, I keep going hard. If I give up, I'm giving up my family. Walter Reed, after being there a couple of months and really trying to help people out of their situation, knowing what I don't do, and being that, I think you're mentors, they call it. People that love my story, I was invited to go to Boston when the bombing went off and talk to the patients there, the people that were, you know, victims of the explosion. And people just get so much of my story, we thought, let's write a book, see if we can inspire people. Let people know that just because I look the way I look doesn't mean that I'm a soft story, you don't have to pity me.
What do you mean? Because you're handsome?
No, I appreciate that, I did that today. But, no, I just, you know, I have no arms and legs, but I let people know that they can ask me anything they want to ask me. I'm open about everything. And I'm just thankful for the states that I have to tell people like, don't pity me, don't call me wounded. I'm just got, you know, scars, pretty awesome scars. But I travel around telling people, you know, you can still do things you want to do. I have a camp up in Maine where I bring veterans like myself and we go snowboarding, fishing, biking, boating, tubing, anything you want to do. And when you read this, you really get a sense of where my life hit a low point and then it turned all around with my wife. My friend told her to leave me. She stayed by my side.
You told her what? Get out of here.
I told her, you know what? You don't have to put up with this. Like, I love you, I think you're the, you know, most important person in the world, but I'll pay you all my money, I'll take the house, everything, and take our little girl that's six month old and go, you don't have to put up with this. And she said, that's the house where it's. And that was the first point. It's like, okay, well, if she's gonna stay by my side, I'm gonna get more independent and I'm gonna get back to recovering because more independent I get, the better off we are.
Now, you fell on a landmine.
Yeah, I set my bag down. We were sitting in place, set my bag down with about 110 pounds and-
Blew 110 pound bag?
Full of ammunition and a little bit of water and stuff. But I set my bag down, it blew from my right side, immediately right on my leg, send grade never found. Severed artery, throwing a lot of blood. My left leg, a couple pieces of tendon and muscle holding the knot and some skin, so they duct taped it to my thigh. Gives nothing to do with it. My left tail was still there, except my ring and pinky finger were gone, so I bring up my LT and my trucker mic. Said, hey LT, they hit a bomb. Medic came running up to me.
Were you that casual?
Actually, I was. But the other day, I can't change the situation. But I was conscious, coming here the whole time, talked to my medics, the flight crew, ambulance arrived at that operating table, and I started like, yeah, I'm like, don't touch me, leave me alone. I had to back my guys. And I was trying to sit up and like start to move, I don't know, I was still awake. You need to go to sleep. My last thought was, baby girl, remember your holder here, because I had a six month old time. And they knocked me out, and they were taking my pants off to operate on me. My leg came with it, so we came with triple amputee. 14 hours of surgery, nine doctors, seven nurses. Two nurses pumped air in my lungs for nine hours straight. And then-
Nine hours?
Nine hours straight, pumping it, so I'd stay alive. And then April 12th, I cut my hand off, and then April 14th, I woke up for the first time in law school, Germany, on my 25th birthday, to find out my brother-in-law, the extent of my injury. I had a 90% amputee.
What'd he say?
The first thing they asked about anyone's name, because I kept saying Mills. Kind of like, you know, great father, was real raspy, getting louder. And then I said, how are my soldiers, how are my soldiers? He told how they were, had two guys that hurt with me, I knew that. And then I said, am I paralyzed? He said, no, you're not paralyzed. And I looked at him and said, no Josh, you can tell them the truth. Like, I gave my fingers and toes, am I paralyzed? He said, you're not, but you don't have your fingers and toes anymore. I just went, oh. And I was real quiet for a while. I didn't want to call my family, I was pretty embarrassed about like, you know-
You were embarrassed?
I was embarrassed, let down. I wanted to take care of my family, you know, I wasn't good at my job, so they weren't supposed to get me ever. And took me a while, called my wife and my mom and dad and everything, and talked to them. And I talked to them, very short, hey, I'm alive. That's it.
How are you taking to this? You're, I mean, you're a hero. You're a huge American hero, you're a legendary hero. You lost so much for us, and I just wonder if you're able to embrace that yet.
And I appreciate you saying I'm a hero, but I always tell people honestly, I didn't do anything more than anybody else.
Yeah, you did.
I had a rough day at work. And then, I don't think my problems are really any more than anybody else. I mean, visually, I look different, I get that. I mean, I put my pants on, then my legs, I have a couple more steps in the morning. But I don't hold anybody's problems any, like, lower than mine. I think my problems are on the same playing field. You could be going through something that no one knows about, or, you know, a mother-in-law or anything like that. And I just think like, that anyway, can really gain from this, it tells a great story of just, you know, my-
It tells a great story of that, who's tough as they come, and that's the name of it. That's when Staff Sergeant Travis Mills, now of the United States, retired. Tough as they come, thousands have been wounded in the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan. Five have survived, was in full amputee injuries. This is one soldier's story, and it's amazing. Fortunately, still be here. I'm so, so happy and honored to know you, and I hope your book is successful.
Thank you so much, let's hear it, let's hear it.
Yeah, you just-
I appreciate it.
Travis Mills, nice to see you.
Thank you very much.
I wish everybody in this country could meet him. The world would be a better place. But reading Tough As They Come is the next best thing. It's out today, it's drop day. Travis is in San Diego right now, talking to some high school students, or he would be live with us here today. Travis Mills, American hero. His book is Tough As They Come. You should get it.
He has a website, that's where all these things are coming from. He also has a book out and a documentary. Like I said, real inspiring story. I'm pretty addicted to him, I constantly watch him. But I think it's an honor and a privilege that we, you know, first of all, the students get to see him. Like Chris said, he's coming back in the evening. We're gonna sell tickets to that event for $10. And all money raised, I'm gonna go to his foundation. He has a foundation up in Maine for, like you said, like you heard him say, for wounded veterans. What he realized when he was in Walter Reed is that they couldn't have their family there with him unless you were something as severe as him. So they let him have his wife there, so they could help him put his limbs on. But if you were a single amputee or a double amputee, or, you know, you couldn't have your family there. So he made this retreat, he was building this retreat up in Maine to have wounded warriors, other wounded warriors, wounded veterans come up and do the stuff that they want to do. Any questions?
Thank you.
You get, like I said, if you get a chance, go on his website, look at, look at his move on on his website. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to- Turnover our business administrator, Ms. Bluen, for the next introduction.
Yes. Without further hesitation, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Dorr. She is here and represents Bashan Kukey, who are independent auditors. They are certified public accountants. So Jennifer, thank you for coming in this evening.
Thanks, thanks for having me. I'm certainly not anywhere near exciting as that. This is, follow that up with the audit, I'm, you know, I'm feeling a little underwhelmed, but it is what it is. I'll just give a quick overview. I mean, the audit's not super exciting, but I felt it's important to just kind of say what we do, how it went, what the results were. If there's any specific questions about anything in the financial statements, I'm happy to answer them. I think you all have a copy of them, so if there's anything specific, I'm certainly, you know, happy to explain anything. The most important part of the audit is our auditor's opinion. That's, you know, what we strive for is, you know, we come in, we do our audit, and then the fin, you know, the opinion in the beginning is sort of the summation of everything that happens. It's an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that you can get. There weren't any issues, there were no scope limitations, we had access to everything. We actually, we make, we made no audit adjustments in any of the funds, so that's your federal projects, that's your food service, the other grant funds, and the general fund. We don't make, we didn't make any suggestions for adjustments, so everything is fairly stated. There's, in the financial statements, there's what I call three sets of financial statements. The beginning, the A and B are just sort of your, that's what we would call real world financial statements. They have your assets, your debt, all of those things are on it. Government accounting is a different beast and has different rules to follow. So that one is on the, in the very beginning, I think it's page three. And that one, if you look at the end, actually, it's page one. I just wanted to touch on it real quick, because there's a new standard that we had to implement this year, and it has to do with the New Hampshire retirement system, this wonderful GASB68, the buzzword that goes around. And as a result of that statement, we booked this unfunded pension liability. It's almost $11 million for the Newmarket School District. That's across the board, it is across through the whole state. It's towns, village districts, schools, anything that pays into retirement system. That's your share of the three point, I believe it's 3.7 and a half billion dollar unfunded liability, that they're funding through contributions over the next 30 years. There is no way to fund it, you can't pay your piece early, there's nothing that you can do with it, it's just a number that we're required to put on there. As a result of putting that on there, if you look at the bottom of page one, it shows that your total net position is this negative $5 million. I just wanted to touch that that's not any fault of the district, it's just a GASB requirement that has to be put on there, and it has done that across the state to everybody. So I just wanted to make that clear, in case anybody was curious as to why there's this big negative number on the bottom.
You guys don't have any representation on GASB, do you?
We don't.
Because it would be great if you guys wanted to just make the public statement that this is so much nonsense.
There's so much, it really is. I say it's to keep GASB in jobs, you know, keep them in business, that they come out with a new, you know, a new statement every few years that just throws, you know, the world into this whirlwind and-
So GASB is the governmental accounting standards board?
Yep.
Which is some really messed up accountants with nothing better to do than hang out down-
Down in Connecticut, yep, they hang out down in Connecticut and they come up with these standards. Few years ago, they did this OPEB one, that was another liability that's put on the books that, again, is unfunded and it's, yeah, it's-
In this case, they took a liability that's not really ours, like she just described, and they made us put it on our books because it was too big to sit on the state's book on by itself, which is where it belongs.
So they said, here, we'll doll this out, and it's gonna be funded with their investment returns and the increase in contributions probably in the coming years. They'll just keep increasing their contributions requirements.
In a quest to make the financial reports really informative for Joe Q Public, they've made them-
Yes, they're supposed to be very user friendly and very, yes, exactly, exactly. So that's what that statement is, and I just wanted to touch on that. Yes.
Well, I think what is important to notice is we've got a statewide unfunded pension liability of $4 billion. Our state government budget is 12.
Right. It is, it's a big number and it's very-
To ignore that and say, you know, it's just gonna take care of itself, it's not.
Right. I mean, fortunately, it is going down, and when they set that and they had the rate of return that they were required to then adopt when they did this new standard, the states was pretty much in line with what they're, you know, they weren't overinflating and guessing, oh, we're gonna have this 11% return or anything. They were very much in line and very reasonable, and actually, their rate didn't even have to change. 2008 was a big hit on investments, and that, you know, sort of was a piece of that. And it's going down each year. You know, there's a chance that that number, you know, it will go, it could go up, it could go down, but I expect that it's gonna go down over the next 30 years.
You're optimistic.
Well, I try to be, gotta be, right? So that's that statement. The next set, the, so what I call the second set is Exhibits C and D. Those are a little bit more of what you would be used to seeing, that's your general fund. The only difference is that in the general fund column are also your expendable trust funds. So when you look at that fund balance number, you know, 1.8 million dollars, that's not just general fund money, that includes your, the balance in your trust funds, which is approximately one, I think it's 1.8, uh, sorry, 1.3 million dollars. So that's what that is. And then the non-major governmental funds is your food service, your federal projects, that's in the back. There's an individual breakdown of those funds rolled up into there, just for information. And then Exhibit E, which is the page five, those are your student activity funds. We don't report on the activity in those funds. We do test it when we come out, but it's an agency fund, you're only holding the money for the students technically. So we just have to report on the balance in that fund. But we do come in and we test, we look at all of them, and we will randomly test transactions from the year, make sure that there's signatures, backups, supporting documentation, that kind of thing. We consider, you know, obviously, a higher risk area whenever you're dealing with cash coming in. So we do look at that, and we had no findings in whom we looked at those either. Everything after that is the footnotes, that just gives you more information about things that are on the balance sheet, different policies, procedures, there's a whole bunch of notes that got added for the net pension liability. On page 24, this is your budget. This is what is the most useful, I would think, to the school board. This shows your general fund, your operating budget, the actual amounts spent and where you stood at year end. You received 100 and, almost $120,000 more in revenue than was anticipated, and you had savings of 500 and, almost $525,000. So that was good. And of the budgetary fund balance at the end of the year was 643,000. 150 of that had been voted to go into your capital reserves in the next year. So you have approximately 400 and change. There's-
150 came out of the 722?
It came out of the 6, I'll go back to it. The 643, yep.
So 150 came out of that?
Yeah, on page 28, there's a little footnote note two that sort of shows the breakdown of that fund balance and what was committed for the 150,000. There's a little small $2,000. If you have a prepaid expense, then we have to say that that's restricted and non-spendable because you've already committed to spending it, or you've already spent it, so it has to be recognized. So you're unassigned, which is what goes back to the taxpayers, would be the 491.
Where is that, where is the unassigned?
On page 28.
Oh, 28.
Yep, sorry, 28, note two.
28, note two.
It's 491, 403.
The 150 is for the Warren article?
That was the Warren article, to go into the capital reserve fund, yep. That was voted at the meeting. And then everything after that is, this is mostly the single audit information. If you, in fiscal year 15, if you spent more than $500,000 in federal funds, we have to do what's a single audit. We have a whole separate set of guidelines. We have to test compliance, we test transactions in what we call the major programs, which this particular year was, we did the nutrition, child nutrition program, and then I believe we did the, yep, the special ed cluster. So we go through and we test payroll, we test cash disbursements, and we look at all those things. And then there's, like I said, there's a list of requirements that we have to test for compliance to make sure they're, you know, pretty strict about what can be in there or not in there. And there was no findings, we had no issues there. For fiscal year 16, the threshold has gone up to $750,000, and barring any huge grants that, you know, you may have coming down the pike that, you know, weren't there in the years prior, you won't have to have a single audit done, which will actually, your audit fee will decrease and probably our time in the field will decrease. So that's a good thing. You know, $750,000 to the federal government is, it's pennies, really. It's not a big thing. So they up that threshold, and by upping the threshold, they're still gonna have tested nine, I think it's 99.4% of all federal grants, just by increasing that threshold. So that won't be in there in the years prior, going forward. We do a data collection form that has to be submitted to the federal audit clearinghouse, and for the two years that we've done the audit, it's been submitted by its deadline of 3/31, which was a goal of Christine and I. It hadn't been done in the future, in the past, it hadn't come that way. So should you ever go over that 750, and you had your single audit done like that, you'd be a low risk, what they call a low risk auditee. So we would meet that criteria, should you be over that threshold next year. And then there's the, there's boilerplate internal control letters, compliance letters. They all say that there were no findings. The language is all just, like I said, it's just a template, but there were no findings, there were no compliance, we had to, we didn't have to submit any findings to anybody. Then there was a supplemental, just a governance letter. This is just our letter that we're required to give to you. It says what our responsibilities were for the audit, what your responsibilities were. We say if there was any disagreements with management, which there were not, any delays in the audit, you know, we didn't have any issues there. I just wanted to touch real quick and let you know, when we do come out to do the audit, big part of our thing is risk assessment. We look at, we don't just come out and look at everything, you can't, we'd be here for days and weeks. But, so we look at the riskier areas, we always look at the major financial classes, we look at payroll, we look at cash disbursements, we find out what the procedures are supposed to be, you know, board signatures, approvals, those types of things. And then we pick sample transactions and we make sure that those are the processes that are being followed. We had no issues there. Christine and Teresa and Rachel at the time, you know, they do a great job. By having no audit adjustments, shows that. That's big. I do a lot of these all year long, and I have very few that that's the case. So you should be proud of your business office, they do a good job. So I can take any questions that anybody might have?
I have one.
Sure.
So can we assume that our financial controls, procedures, policies, as it relates to things like payroll, are accurate?
Yes, yes. I mean, we, like I said, we come out and we, not only do we document what, you know, your policies are, and are followed, but we make sure that, do they make sense? I mean, do you have segregation of duties? Do you have approvals in place? Are pay rates approved? You know, we look at all of those things. So from our standpoint, you know, what we've looked at and what we did, yes, we, you know, the policies were accurate. We always say it's to keep reviewing them, not to just go, okay, all is good and move on. I mean, things change, people change, you know, positions change. So we always say it's good to review the policies and, you know, don't just accept them for what they are, you know, every once in a while, sort of pull them up and go, is this good? Is there anything else that we could change? I mean, there's always things that could be changed, but as policies that were in place at this time when we looked at them, yeah.
And I have no reason to be, this is pure cerebral stuff. If we weren't paying our bills on time, would you let us know?
Yeah, I mean, we look at, you know, we look at invoices, we will pull them, and I mean, if it was sitting out there for six months and, you know, you had major old invoices sitting out there, or you were being charged finance charges or whatever, it would certainly come up like as a management point. We do the same thing with deposits, we make sure deposits are going in the bank timely. We don't want money sitting around in banks, that's one of the big things we look at with student activity funds, because they tend to sit in secretary's drawers for, you know, extended periods of time and then, oh, I forgot that that was there. So, you know, we like to see things go into the bank at least weekly. So those are certainly things that we look at. You know, we review credit card transactions, that's a separate area that we look at. We want, we want, look to see what's being used to buy a credit card, you know, with a credit card. And again, if there's finances charges being, you know, incurred, those types of things, we would definitely make recommendations in those types of things. We don't, unless it comes up in our, every three years, we do a bigger test on the major transactions. We're required to test them every three years, like, in bigger volume.
When does that come up?
It, we were, it's on a rotating schedule. So the first year that we come out, we do 40, no matter what. We test them, because it's a new client, we test them across the board, and then we start alternating. So this year, we didn't have to test the big selection. So next year, we will do one of the areas. I don't, couldn't tell you off the top of my head if it's cash disbursements or if it's payroll. So we do it on a rotating basis, unless positions change. So if you get a new payroll clerk, or a new, you know, anybody processing, if that changes, then we will test them in that year to make sure that the process didn't change.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So just in terms of timing, how long does it take to do one of these reviews? And when did you, when did you do it?
We come out in September. We came out right after Labor Day, I believe it was. I think we were only here two days, but we came out earlier in the summer, we can come out and do prelim work. So we'll come out and we'll get bank confirmations going. There's a lot of things that we can do ahead of time, debt confirmations, that type of stuff, we spend a day, and then we come out to do the audit. So it's about three days. Without a single audit next year, it'll probably be two. It would probably be two days. But we do it in September, and the reports were issued. We had a little delay in wrapping up the capital asset information, just trying to, there's a lot of information there, yeah, inventory, getting that balanced and working, and, you know, that tends to be a sticking point sometimes. But we issued the report on February 4th. Yeah, what's that?
So we go above and beyond for inventory?
Yes, you do go above and beyond. We always say that a threshold, especially in a school district, could be 10,000, 15,000 even, and your threshold is much, much lower, so they're required to pick up a lot more things than, you know, what we would say would be beneficial to doing so, but, you know. We don't have to submit this to anybody, other than the clearinghouse, the federal audit clearinghouse, because of the single audit, we give the bound reports to you, sometimes DOE, I don't know if they ask for them from you, but we don't personally, they're your financial statements, so they get submitted to whoever you would need to.
So the independent audit, we finance it, we pay for it, it's our checking balance, which is why it's, you know, it's useful to have the auditors come back and report. On some basis, we haven't done this in the last couple of years, but this is nice. It does go to the DOE, the, there's an audit department at the DOE, Nancy Heath is the auditor, and they take a quick peek. In this case, there's no findings, there's nothing that would have jumped to the commissioner's attention, so, but they filed it away, and so does the federal clearinghouse, obviously, filed it away and, and so does the federal clearinghouse, obviously, because we're such a, because we're a recipient, so, of federal funds.
I think it's crucial to, to make sure that everything is as it should be in the financial. So, I appreciate the thoroughness of the report and the access that we have to it.
Yep. And I'm happy to come anytime. And Christine knows she can reach me anytime throughout the year. I always say, don't save up your questions for when we come out and, you know, I'm reachable all year round. So.
How long have you represented us?
It's been two years. We've done the audit the last two years. We won't say how long I've been doing this in general. It's been a while. Yeah, it's been a long time.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for talking. Christine, congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to jump, jump in and talk us through briefly your financial report?
Yes, you can. So, in the packet, the first thing you saw was the updated trust funds. That was updated as of March. So, the only thing that would change with those is some minimal interest that we would accrue. And then the, hold on, mine's all upside down because I double, it's double-sided. So, I'm gonna cheat and use my version. So, a couple of things I'm just gonna highlight and feel free if you have any specific questions regarding the report. So, the fir, on page one, you'll see special education. You'll see that there's a lot of items, line items in that particular function that are in the red. And that has to do with, that's our special education for out-of-district replacement. It's our contracted services, charter school, things of that nature. You'll also see the trickle-down effect when you flip to special education for transportation because we do have additional students. We have additional services that are being rendered to students, new students and existing students that were unanticipated. I also learned just yesterday, it's either yesterday or today, my days are kind of blended. So, I apologize. But, there's also potential that we could receive another student for out-of-district replacement. So, this number can and will change between now and the end of the school year. But, to the best that I know as of today, this is what I'm projecting for that particular function for special education. No other major changes or significant things to bring to your attention on page one there, which is, you can see the things that are encumbered. We've got payroll encumbrances starting to work. We've got the schools really encumbering their, their expenditures as they seem fit throughout the rest of the year.
Can we, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
So, just quick, quick stuff coming up in my head. On the contracted services, I, what I know is that the hardest thing to do is get the special ed, one of the hardest things to do in business is to get special ed department to be honest about where we are in the year. So, we spent $124,000 in these contracted services. We still encumber another 80. That shows that we've billed out, we've paid about 60% of what we expect and, and haven't paid 40%.
Correct.
Which could almost be true if they haven't actually got March billing in because March, April, May and June would be another four months out of 10.
And 10,000 of that is just recent.
Okay. But, if I jump to charter school, is that gonna happen? Because that's half a year's worth of services that have not yet been billed out. And the same thing with, with, with tuition, the handicap, the tuition above, I'm wondering if that's even encumbered enough because that only represents 26% of what we think we're spending for the whole year. They don't have to, they don't have to align. They don't have to make sense that way, but often they do. So, I'm wondering, did you have much luck in trying to ferret out how real these are?
Yes. I did have a conversation with the director and she said that this is to the best of knowledge based on the payments. Some of them are off, some are March, some are February. So, it's hard to say because we do get things in late. But, also, when some of the students don't attend, you know, school on that particular day, we don't pay for it. So, we try to make those adjustments on a monthly basis. So, being that this is almost the end of the month, we could make some small adjustments here or there. But, this is as accurate as what they know to be billed for the remainder of the year. So, we take what the contract is for the out-of-district placement and their services on an annualized basis and encumber those funds. Now, some of these, like I've just mentioned, the reason why they don't necessarily play to that rule of if you made it half the year, half of it should be expensed, well, because we just got new students in and now we're changing some of the services from being out-of-district to in-district. But, that now means there's contracted services that are gonna be involved and vice versa. And we're gonna have another student come in. So, then you're gonna see that adjustment as well. When the student does arrive, that's when we make the encumbrance. We don't project it ahead of time because sometimes they come in later, sometimes they come in earlier, sometimes they don't come. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Good questions. So, moving on to page two, the only thing there you can see is just under school board is the contracted services that you are all aware of. So, you can just see, we kind of just left that in its own line. So, it would just be, it wouldn't be commingled with some of your other accounts. You can see there's scrolling down, there's only some other minimal changes between, you know, some salary lines in there, some legal expenses, things of that nature, membership fees. Any particular questions you'd like me to talk about in regards to school board or SAU? Okay, seen none. On page three, you can just see, just again, just to bring it back for those who are in the audience and listening, we do have all of our benefits now consolidated on the 2,900, broken into the different levels. So, we have it by the SAU, the elementary, the middle school and the junior, senior high, junior high, senior high. So, you can just see that they're all lumped together there. So, it makes it very easy to see what the total benefits are for health insurance and FICA and, and retirement and those natures. So, no big thing there, except for in the middle of the page. Again, like I said, there's the trickle-down when you have more additional students in out-of-district placement and contracted services. Then comes with it the transportation to provide those. So, you can just see that we have a deficit in the special ed transportation line. Moving on to page four, regular education, special education. We're now in the elementary school. So, you can see that if you look at the remaining percentages, you can kind of see that a lot of what has been requested has been allocated and encumbered, at least to date. This, just so you know, is my, what I'm projecting through the end of the year. So, even though this is April 21st, this is my projection where I see that we're gonna be for the year end with what I know and can foresee. Really, no big changes there. Just some minimal equipment to special education, just to meet IEPs, things of that nature. Any questions on page four? Page five is dealing with co-curricular and athletics, summer school, homework club and guidance. Just some small little changes there. Again, what you can just see is the coaches. Again, that's just what I know and what we currently have for contracts right now. So, you can see there's gonna be some, there could be additional utilization there with what I know. But, as of right now, I believe that's how we're gonna finish the One thing you will notice, which I find, it, it's different, but you'll see that the conference in expenses from the elementary is vastly different than our junior, senior high school. You can see that we don't, a lot of our staff don't take advantage of it at our elementary school. But, to the contrary, the high school definitely takes advantage of it. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So, you'll see it in a few minutes when we get there. On page six, you're starting to deal with library, technologies, principal's office and building and maintenance. So, you can just see building, repair and maintenance. We've had some unexpected repairs that we've had to make, things to roofs and windows and things of that nature. I do anticipate that we're gonna have a fuel savings. I'm trying to project the fuel. I'm waiting to see what this last month comes in at and I might be revising that number in favor for once because we're having a pretty mild year, but as well as we locked in at a really substantial rate this year. So, that was a, a large savings that we're gonna have. And so, I'll be reporting back to you on, on that once we kinda, now that I think we've got March wrapped up, I think we're gonna be in the clear for some good weather, hopefully. On page seven, we're just coming to the end of the elementary school. So, you can kind of see what the remaining percentage is about three and a half percent there. And then now you're going into the middle school. One of the things that we are experiencing at the junior, senior high school is a lot of leave of absence. The joke has been, don't drink the water because we have a lot of maternity leaves. So, when you see those types of things, you're gonna start seeing long-term substitute lines. So, you can see here that we have a large deficit of 26,000 in the middle school. But, just keep in mind that some of that is offset by the teacher salaries that are not being expended because they are on a leave. On page eight, so you can see.
Excuse me a minute. So, but if you look at professional salaries, you don't see a deficit.
Right.
It's over budget.
Right. We have a savings in professional and if you look at long-term subs, we have a deficit of 26,000. So, if you net those two together, you're still in a deficit, but it's still helping.
Okay.
Do you see that, Al?
Kinda. I'll, I'll look at it again. Okay.
Special education, you can just see there's been some changes in staff there. So, we have small deficits there for salaries, aides and substitutes. Really, no other changes.
Christine, just on that, what Al was talking about, I'm just on page seven or 15. It says, under the category of long-term substitutes, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the numbers. It, there was a zero for a budget, correct?
I don't budget long-term substitutes.
Okay.
Correct. We, we do daily substitutes, but not long-term substitutes because we don't know that they're long-term substitutes because typically you just budget what your salaries are and then you budget substitutes. But, when you have it, a long-term substitute, which is typically, you need a certified person in the position and it's for a longer period of time because they're doing academics, they're doing learning plans, they're doing lesson plans, all of that. So, we want to award them. So, we pay them on a different step and scale versus a daily sub. So, what we do is I just list it out separate so that way I can see what we've expended for a long-term sub for that year. Because I think it's, it's critical to know, I don't wanna charge it just to my daily subs and kind of commingle the two because then my, my daily subs would be, the line would be not a real reflection of what is happening in the school. So, you budget your salaries and then you just budget your daily subs and that's it. And then when you have a long-term sub, you just know that you hope with the savings of not paying that person who is out on a leave would be offset by some of what you're gonna pay for a long-term sub. Did that help, Mike?
I, I suppose I, the, I'm just, there's, there's no negative number at the end. It's just got a, a 0%. Is that because there was no known number to start with?
Correct.
And that's a choice. I mean, the alternative is, everything you see on the line called long-term sub could be mixed into the line above it.
I got you.
It's only to break it out. You know, when, when she said we didn't budget for it, well, we did. We budgeted 10,000 for subs. In this case, when the teacher's still getting paid sick leave because they're not there and the sub is moved beyond the, the lesson planning that was done by the teacher. So, long as the teacher's putting the plan together and gonna be out for one day or two days, that's one thing. When a teacher's out for 30 days, the substitute now needs to be certified because that substitute is doing the lesson planning, is leading the class and is doing so in many cases, in most cases independently. Now, you're compensating them differently and she's just capturing that detail. The alternative is that you'd see against the 10,000, you'd see 23,000 spent to date, 9,000 encumbered and we'd be over budget by 22. And she's right. I mean, I, I agree. The, the idea is you hope that you've got salaries of regular, regular salaries, you know, the teacher earns, the two aren't equal because the teachers, in some cases, still being paid accumulated sick leave at their regular rate while you're also paying a certified teacher to sub in for them. So.
I recall this being explained before now.
Once we've.
Yeah. So.
Okay. Any questions on page eight or do you want me to redo that one? That was the co-curriculars and athletics, summers, homeschool, summer school, excuse me. Okay, page nine, not a lot, not a lot of changes going on here. You can just see what now into the nurses, your speech, your library, technology and the principal's office. You can kind of see, if you looked in the percent remainings, you can kind of see where we are and where we think we're gonna end for the year. So, you can just see again that the conferences really get utilized and at the junior, senior high as well as the high school. So, nothing to draw your attention to on that line. Page 10 is just starting to wrap up the junior high. So, you can just see, again, we have some expenses in heating repair system, in repair and maintenance. That puts us into, those lines into deficits. Health and, health and benefits are listed down below. And then you can see overall the, the junior high, we have about 1.71% remaining. So, that would just give you a good idea of funds being appropriately requested and utilized. Moving on to page 11, we start getting into the high school. So, again, same thing, long-term subs. You can see there, professional salaries, the daily subs and the long-term subs. Career and tech is a little bit higher than what we anticipated this last year. Page 12, no big things here to discuss. It's talking about the advisor salaries, athletics, homework club and guidance.
Christine, on the new, under athletics, under the new equipment, is this another situation where we don't budget anything at the start or?
They didn't anticipate getting a piece of new equipment.
Okay.
And so, we, the request was made. So, I just haven't transferred the funds yet because we're in the process of making that request. So, once the request is see-through fruition, one thing you can do is you can, I can make a budget adjustment. And so, that way I'd move money from one account to the other. Some business administrators, they don't do that. They just leave it as an expense. Nathan's laughing because that's really what he does. So, it's just, it's just a matter of your financials and how you wanna see and how you wanna represent it. But, it doesn't mean you can't make the expenditure. It's just that it wasn't an original request at the beginning of the year. And keep in mind, when we do this budget, it's so far in advance, you can't predict some of these things.
And who approves that, that change in budget?
That goes through a series. So, the requests go, go through the building principal, up to myself. And depending on the request, it would be approved by the superintendent.
At what level does a superintendent?
Be more specific. Are you asking like, is there like a dollar amount threshold or?
10,000.
Yeah. I would say about 10,000, which is comparable to when you have to come in to sign like a particular invoice, things of that nature. Our policies read 10,000. You have to do bidding and things of that nature. But, typically, Al, when something like this comes up, there typically, there's concessions involved. So, you don't just get to say to, you know, the principal or myself, I wanna make a $7,000 purchase. It's like, okay, but you're gonna make the $7 purchase, then what are we gonna do to help find that money? What's gonna offset it? What is the concession involved in it? So, it's a conversation. You don't just get to overspend your budget because you wanna buy something. So, there's a process.
And so, but for what it's worth, in this case, the budget quote-unquote isn't overspent because that athletic, that athletic department at the high school, we're at the high school, was budgeted at, well, the subtotal here is 91 and change. And we're gonna finish with 6,800 potentially still unspent. So, even though we spent in the equipment category, we didn't spend as much in supplies. We didn't spend as much in coaching salaries. We didn't spend in officials.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
It's different than taking money out of Spanish and sticking it here.
Yeah, that doesn't, yeah, no. That's what the process is in place for, is to make sure.
I thought they asked this a long time ago, but on the calendar, what, what percentage of the year is remaining? I know you're gonna, if you take where we are now through the year, what percent of the year should, if, if a budget was absolutely on target, what percent would we have remaining?
You mean, as of today?
As of some.
Is that what you're saying?
Sure.
Is that what you're asking? Because I'm not sure what you're asking. So, the percent, well, are you asking in terms of what I'm projecting? Because like, I'm projecting the year. So, you should have, when you close a year, the ideal year end is 2% to 3% of your budget. But, I don't do it, I'm not doing it on a monthly basis. Like, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. It's hard to be linear because we spend a lot of money on supplies and equipment upfront.
Yeah.
And less during the year. And our salaries, the teachers have the big balloon payment that they get in June where they get five checks in one. So, it's hard to see it as linear, but I was doing that on another exercise.
If it were linear.
If it were linear, you're 75%.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I meant. So, on a line, if you were paying a monthly telephone bill.
Monthly, yep.
It's, we should have 25%.
Remaining.
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 But, you won't see that in this because I'm projecting that, I'm projecting for the remainder of the year. I'm projecting it 100%. So, that's what I'm saying. This won't be.
So, if you were just looking down the actual column.
Yes.
Fiscal, fiscal activity, it's called.
Right.
That you'd think, meh, right around 75%.
That's all I'm trying to.
That's, that's.
And I, I mean, 75. I just plugged that in my head. I got June, May and a half April.
Half April.
So, I got three and a half out of 10.
We got a quarter.
Yeah.
Well, you gotta remember because I haven't really gotten my invoices for April for fuel, electricity, all those. I mean, they're a month behind. So.
It's funny because there are some accounts in here that are absolutely linear.
Should be.
But, there's, you know, but, but unfortunately, the big ones like salaries, 80%, that isn't.
Well, benefits should be linear, right?
Well, no, because of New Hampshire Retirement and FICA chasing those big balloon checks.
Yep.
Your health insurance is pretty linear.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Health would be, dental would be, yep.
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 But, but the, the salary related, like taxes.
FICA and Hampshire Retirement.
Right.
But, and then special ed, which is a, a big number.
Yep.
Like she was explaining earlier, just, it cannibalizes anything that might look predictable.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Yep. So, page 13, really not much to discuss there unless you have specific questions. And page 14, there you can just see the building repair, repair is special. That's where we've, we've kind of earmarked the funds for some of the projects that we've had, such as the carpenter property, the demolition of it. So, you can kind of just see that we have a deficit there. Heating repairs as well. So, that overall function you can see is a deficit of 16,000 at the moment.
The heating system repair was the stuff that we, the inventory we bought in case it was a problem.
Correct. Yep.
That was like $6,000.
Correct. Yep. And then page 15 is, you can just see where I'm projecting the fund balance. So, the bottom line where we're projecting as of today, of what I know, is about $340,000 for our fund balance. Our revenues are right on target. We don't really have any. Our revenues are right on target. We don't really have any excess revenues at the moment. I'm anticipating that we possibly could, but I don't want to project that until probably the end of May. I can update you then with those, so that way we can kind of see where we fall for an overall fund balance.
Were we at 480 last time we did this fund balance? The last report I saw was 480, if I'm not mistaken. Pretty close to that.
That's about right. I want to say it was 450, 480.
So it's $110,000 down?
Yep. And that a lot has to do with special education.
In terms of.
Of which you haven't programmed, some of which we may have to, let me try that again. If somebody shows up tomorrow, that number's going to get worse.
That's correct.
Put none in there because you don't know.
I have no idea, because it can be as little as 10,000 to as high as 100,000. You just don't know.
What you just said a moment ago, is it's, you think somebody's coming.
We were notified that there is a potential, there's a student that is coming.
Yeah, okay.
But that's all I know. We don't know what the child's needs are. They haven't met with our IEP team. There's a process that's in place when the child does arrive that we have to evaluate and assess, and then we will put a plan in place and then execute the plan.
And, this ends 30 June.
Yeah.
So there's two months' worth of, and a quarter of a million dollars for an out-of-district placement, two months could be 50. But probably not.
No.
It's, you know, we're probably not talking about that kind of exposure for the couple of months. But the extended year, the summer program could be completely squashed because one student could really drive the summer costs that we didn't anticipate, so.
So when we think back about what we were talking about last week or the meeting before that about security issues, and using fund balance to support those, those security issues, which was about $250,000 for the whole, whole boat, and a special ed student, we could eat this up in a heartbeat.
Yep.
And 150 for.
All right, the 150's already been taken out, right?
No, it has not.
So we, we are.
We don't even have 340. We have, we have 190.
Yeah.
So we got 190, possible kid, and security, and there's nowhere the place to go.
Oh, there's other places.
Well, there's, yeah.
Trust funds?
We talk about trust funds. We still.
You have impact fees?
We haven't asked for the impact fees, so everything that Rick Malaski did for us for roughly 60-ish, 66 grand for the carpenter property is here. We hadn't asked, just, I don't remember how much conversation we had, but the night that we stood here in front of the town council, I didn't like, I didn't like the way it felt. And in terms of the suggestion that some might have made or did make, that the impact fee is clearly supposed to be enrollment-driven, and if there wasn't an increasing enrollment demand at the time, then how did that justify using that money at Carpenter? And I thought there may be other justifications that make more sense. So if the operating budget can eat it, let's leave it there for right now, and we'll think about the, but we have to make that decision between now and June 30th, because we either have to request it and put it in this year or not, so. But there's, now there's 90-ish thousand dollars available in impact fees. That conversation was a little over 60 that we were approved by the council to withdraw. And then, of course, we have, because we have the trust fund sheet, we have, we have repair and maintenance that could be, against which we could, we could request something, including the upgrade of cameras, for instance. The technology trust fund has its own purpose, but if we anticipated in another cycle that we were going to put some money back into that, we could draw down on that for some of the technology that underlies some of our security as well.
I guess, well, my head is, and it's a somewhat different subject, but, well, it's not. It's the same subject, and that is that the security is so critical.
Right.
That if there's some places within this budget where money's going to be spent that is not critical, we need to talk about it. Because I don't want to see that thing, I don't want to see a new, I don't know, a new goalpost go up and have the security not taken care of. So that's, I would like to see if we can.
Well, that's next up, so. And they're here to give us some updates on what the bidding, the bidding war has brought us, so why don't we keep going? You guys have got any other questions about the financials as it stands right now? Then we lost. Well, she's still working on the technology.
He's gone.
You guys want to update us on, in front of us is video surveillance quotes. That's what I've got in front of me. On the agenda, we're up to, we're up to continuing item of security. Let me just preface that in the packet, I had a conversation with the chief, and I said, I said, I think there's consensus on the school board to tackle everything that's been presented to us in terms of security. Very difficult to say no to any of it, obviously, but I said, "Chief, please appreciate that we didn't budget accordingly for this, so we're coming to the end of the year where we may have some fund balance we could use. There may be some trust funds we could use, but a not yet that looks like as much as maybe a quarter million dollars almost, might be more than we can swing at right now." And we started a conversation about what could we do now and what could we do in a little bit, and the conversation and consensus of the board was, we didn't want to make the judgment call necessarily. We wanted him to weigh in. He made his apologies. He's unavailable to be with us tonight because he's away. He's happy to come back and find us and meet with us when he returns, and now we've got meetings on the 12th and the 26th, though. He may, he can't meet with us on the 5th, but he might be able to come back and meet with us on the 12th. But in the meantime, he sent something along in writing to try to satiate our request, saying what he said to me verbally, which was, "If you're talking about making some, making a commitment against some of it now and the rest of it next year, you can work with the guys, and Wayne can, you know, Wayne Stevens, he can make some suggestions, and certainly you can divvy that up." He didn't say any way you want, but essentially, as long as what you're looking to do is take a bite at it now and take the other bite later, or tomorrow, next year, like, right away. If what you're saying is, we'd like to take a bite at some of it now and then wait five years, that's not, that's not okay. He said, "I don't think we, I don't think we can be confident and comfortable in doing that. But if there's some elements that, that you can, you know, that you can or want to postpone into the next budget year since you can find more dollars and finish it, then we can talk about what works best." And one of the comments that he made was, "I don't know that it can be a 50-50 split," because, he said, "Some of what you're doing with the cameras is server-side. It's the infrastructure in the background, and so your first bite's probably going to be bigger, and the second bite would just be more cameras, not more system, because you've got to put the system in place." And I told him, I didn't think that was a problem, because I didn't think we were looking to take a small bite followed by a big one. I thought we'd be talking about taking a big bite and then a smaller one. But I just didn't know what those numbers were until we had this conversation, so. That was the letter that the chief sent that was in our packet, so that everybody would have a copy of that. So tell me, how much fun have you had?
Tons.
Great.
Yeah, always. So you see the bids in front of you, right? I broke them down, the basic bid, any recurring costs, which are all surprisingly low compared to the initial cost. Total cost, that fourth column over, that includes all of our network switching, so that's another 11,400 server racks and about 10 switches total.
That's in there?
That, well, yep, that's in that total cost, and then the average cost per camera includes that additional 10,000, too. So as you can see, you know, we mentioned a $2,400 per camera number. That's kind of right in the middle, towards the higher end. Our lowest bid came in around 2,067 per camera, and the highest bid was 2757. And as you can see by looking at the total, that's pretty, that's a substantial difference. Highest bid was about 190, and lowest was 142.
That's same equipment?
Actually, the, the highest bid is a, yeah, yeah, that is the same equipment.
So it's apples to apples?
Apples to apples. There's a couple that bid different cameras, but they're still equal, equal value.
For the first one without the recurring cost, do they include that, do they build in support into the cost, or is that an additional fee later on?
Everybody offers one year of support. After that, you'd pay, if they had to come out and adjust the camera. So you, if you hang a camera 15 feet off the ground, you're going to probably need a cherry picker or lift to come out there and service it, and they all were roughly around $150 an hour for service and support.
So this is full boat, as you talked about last time?
Yes.
The max coverage?
Did you all get a chance to look at the maps? Send over. So you can, you can see the camera placements there.
But there was a, it was a full boat.
Exactly. And by full coverage, I mean every exterior door, which you know at the junior, senior high school, there are 15, 16 doors. There's a lot, so. And again, that's why we started with the full coverage, right? We didn't want to make that decision, you know, this door is more important than that door, and. So, in all the hallways, lots of cubby holes, corners.
Have you guys had a chance since the day that I had that conversation with the chief? He said he's going to talk to Wayne and let Wayne come back and talk to you about, you know, we just got done talking about how much money we have or don't have. If we can take some of this, okay, let me back up. The other items, the cards, the hero system or whichever, when we're talking about the ID badge and checking in with the camera and actually having pictures of you, the under, undercarriage, underdesk security alarm to bring the local PD, there's a couple others, the small, smalls.
Gates.
Flashing lights.
Flashing lights.
The 28,100 didn't include the fencing or the gate out behind the elementary, but included the other things. So 28,100, I think, was the number. So if you, if you consider that, and now put it on top of a, of a total cost that I'm going to say is something here, right?
150.
150 or 160.
It's 178.
So, I'm, I'm, total cost, I'm still somewhere right around 190 and change.
Versus the 250.
Versus 250, which is better, except we just got done saying, we may or may not have all of 190. My only question is, did you guys have a chance to talk about anything that would make, for instance, 150 look like 150, or 90 and 60, or 110 and 40, in terms of, you just got done saying, I didn't want to pick this camera versus that camera, but...
As far as breaking out the camera project?
Yeah.
Would, you could, you could carve it out, you know, carve it right in half and get almost 35 cameras now, 35 cameras later. The one thing we'd want to do first is all the cabling.
Well, yeah, you want to do the backend, do the infrastructure.
20,000. You could, you could do one server now, one server later, and split it up that way.
You got, you got, you got blind spots on the exterior at the junior, senior high school, and reasons, reasons to want those blind spots tapped, and you want, you know, to cover them. You've got the potential for vandalism, you've got people coming and going, you've got movement, you want to be able to record it. You probably have some of that interior as well.
Sure.
You go to the elementary school, you've got some gaps because you don't have anything, right? So I guess the, you know, the question that I was kind of wondering is, what feels best to Wayne in terms of fix this? If, I mean, I've been, I've been 10 years, I've been 20 years, I've never had a camera at the elementary. If I, if I, if I carved it right in the middle, or not right in the middle, but if I said, "Don't do anything at the elementary, just do the high school and make sure the junior, senior high school is fixed," or vice versa, how does that break out? But I guess I, I don't want, I didn't want to propose anything that was that arbitrary. I wanted it to be, "Look, we got to do some, we got to do the backend, you know, the infrastructure, and we got to do these. Once we've done that, we can spend 5,000 at a shot and start adding cameras as fast as we can." Do you know what I mean? You'll know by October, November, even before snow flies, you'll be able to look at the new budget and say, "Hmm, we got all the staff hired, everybody's in. On the salary side, we've already got cushion of about 75 grand. Okay, good, buy the rest of the cameras." You know what I mean? We could, we could anticipate some of that and do that. Or we could even make the decision, having started a new school year with a new superintendent in place and, and things are rocking and rolling, let's go ahead and spend some trust fund money from the technology side, for instance. We're not worried because our plans moving forward are.
I think this is where we left it last time.
Well, and that's.
Really Wayne and Chief Seer need to come in and tell us.
Well, like I said, the chief sent that letter because he, and he said to me, "I'm going to hang up right now and call Wayne and say,
Right.
"Be prepared to divvy it up." And we had the conversation about, it probably can't be 50-50, it's probably got to be more in the first year, and I said, "I'm not trying to judge what it is. I'm just telling you, we may not have that much money." And Chief Seer, of course, with a chuckle, said, "I've lived with fiscal constraint. I get it." And I said, "Okay, well then, just give us a path."
Jason, one of the times we talked about this, there was a question about whether that infrastructure and the cabling could also be used for the key code system? Are these systems compatible that way, or am I?
They can be.
Okay.
And also, you know, if we start, if we selected one vendor to come in and do all of the strobes, you know, do everything, which, when we went out to bid, we got quotes from different vendors. We wanted everything separate. But if we combined everything, we're looking at some savings there, too. How much, we don't know.
Okay.
I may be oversimplifying it, but I, again, I go back to Chief Seer's comments about what keeps him awake at night, and I think we need to hear from him and Wayne.
I was reading Chief Seer's letter while people were talking.
He seems to defer to Wayne.
Yep.
And that's what he did on the phone, too. He said, "As long as you're not telling me that you're trying to make this a 10-year plan or a five-year vision, you're going to take a bites, I'll, you know, I'll update, I'll let Wayne tell you, you know, where he would put the money first and keep going."
Chief, I take it what you meant by doing all the cabling all at once, is it, it would be more expensive if you did half of it now than had them come back and run the?
Sure, and I mean, it could be a few thousand dollars more, but to bring all your gear in and pull, it'd be 69 runs, probably 20,000, close to $20,000 worth of cabling there.
The P system, what is, is that the card system?
Yeah. So here's what I was looking for tonight. I think I just heard enough to know that we got the 28,100 for all of the things, not counting the cameras. The strikes, move forward with that. Some of those things aren't going to get implemented for this school year anyway. They're going to get purchased and put on a schedule, there's going to be training, we're going to get the wiring done, we're going to, I would entertain a conversation about giving them the go-ahead to spend out of the current operating budget, the 21,000 and change, to make initial purchases and roll with getting the security button, getting the key swipe card, getting the badge system walking in the door. They've done the homework on all those things, and we have those, and we reasonably have that much money. And we can take it right out of the operating budget, and then, then what it leaves us with is, other than some facility things, like the gate out back on the road and the fence and the field, and we can talk about those, it leaves us with the camera system. And then, as we, as we bring them in and we talk more about it. Now, maybe that's, I mean, maybe that's put in the cart for the horse, because maybe they'd say the cameras were more important, but I didn't get that sense. I get the sense that doing, doing the camera, it's all equally important at this point, but there's little things like that security buzzer under the desk that I just think, "Love it, that should have been there five years ago or 20 years ago. Like, we could do that anytime. Let's just do it."
I would like to do the things that we can do now, now, and really look at the budget and everything else to determine how and what the officer says in terms of what we need for the cameras, so we can get that in place as soon as possible, too, based upon the budgetary constraints that we have. Because I just think it's paramount importance that we get it addressed. And I appreciate the work that you guys have done, Jason, to get us to this point, getting these, getting spit information. I appreciate it greatly.
My pleasure.
So I'd entertain a motion for us to, to direct the, the, the team to move forward with the key card fob system at both schools, the computer visitor check-in at both schools, the flashing lights. Flashing lights?
The, for the strobes.
Oh, yeah, the interior, the loud rooms, right? The loud rooms.
Yeah.
The strobes, those, and the panic buttons, estimated at $28,100, and schedule us on the agenda for the 12th of May to come back to security when we can have Wayne and Steve and the chief with us.
I'd second that.
Al would make, Al would make that motion?
Yeah, I would.
I'll second it.
You guys have done just an absolutely terrific.
Kudos, kudos.
Thank you.
Kudos, kudos.
Any discussion?
Just, Jason, we talked about the, maybe combining things and having, I, I don't, I'm not a technical person. I don't know what the crossover here is between doing the strobes and doing the wiring for the, you know, for the key fob.
So strobes would be separate. Those are going to be real basic. Strobe light with the switch in the main office. Panic button, same thing, they'll be separate, line straight back to the PD. The only thing we can combine is the camera system and key fob system. Some of the key fobs we looked at don't work with. Some of the key fobs we looked at don't work with the camera software that I'd prefer. So we can go back and look and find one that will work with that, assuming.
Is that just cabling? I mean, is that just, they can piggyback on the same cord?
As far as the key fobs, well, everything now is networked, so you'd have a controller in the ceiling connected to the door controller, networked back to our network, which would go back to the video management software.
So what's the, what's the, what's the overlap? What's, where's the overlap that is of benefit?
To, as far as the management, adding users to the key fobs, you could control it the same place you control the cameras.
An alternative would be?
Separate system, which is, I mean, right now at the elementary, I think we have three different door access control systems.
So go back to, where in the camera system is there going to be a user that's going to be identified like with a key fob? Is there? When you see this face, lock it down.
No, they do have cameras that do that, facial recognition, but we're not looking into anything like that.
Right.
But you could, that's an option where you could, Jason Carey has a key fob. When I swipe in, if the camera system's tied to the key fob, my name would pop up, you know, when I'm looking at a camera playing back. You could then go in and search Jason Carey in the computer system and see all the footage of me when I'm accessing the door. So it's pretty, pretty wild what you can do.
Sounds cool. Sounds cool. Are you going to use it?
But I think so, yeah.
Are you going to come away from the camera software that you'd like to use for lots of good reasons so that it can marry up with a key fob? Which you're going to put on four doors?
I, I mean, who knows down the road, right, if we end up facilities-wise with the key fob on every exterior door, then we'd, we'd want something that meshes. But where the video management's the big expense. I think we want the best out there and a key fob that works with that.
I think Chris is about ready to jump out of his seat. Did you, did you have something to say?
I was just going to say with, with so many community events at the school, say rec basketball, coming in out of that backdoor gym, vandalism happens, we'll know with that key fob system tied into the cameras, who's using it if we tied it that way. With, with, that's, I think, what Jason's saying, and then if there's an event at the school, we'll be able to manage it a little bit better with that one system tying into the doors and the camera system and the presentations that we've sat into. So I think that's why we're looking at one management system for both.
So, so just so I can understand, so that if you have the system, you'd like the key fob, you swipe it in, it takes a picture and, but it also puts a name to it, right?
Correct.
Right? The alternative is it doesn't, but the key fob data.
Still has a time, date stamp.
Yeah, it still has you. So what's the?
The, the big benefit is whoever's managing the system is going to have, you'll log in, you can do your door access controls in your cameras in a single pane of glass as opposed to just having another, another separate system.
But are you going to sacrifice what you want for the camera management system, the video management? You're going to sacrifice and take a lesser product so that you can marry it up with a key fob?
No, I think we'd, we'd do the other way around, switch to find a door access control. So if we move forward with the door access controls first, we'd choose one that will work.
Make sure you.
Yeah, the other way around.
Well, so you're there. You're there, right? Because we're not only talking about trying to find the money, we're not trying to, on this, go back to your video surveillance RFP. You got a pref, you got a preference?
Top three.
Okay, which was alphabetical, but, but they just happen to be your top three? Because Burns is, Burns is right up the street.
Sure.
The cost time and the access seems like, if, if all things were equal, I'd love to work with Burns and they've got a great reputation.
Absolutely.
Just the beginning of what I know, or just the end, actually. So I can't speak to the other two.
Yeah, there's a few on here that I've already seen the, the product in action, been to schools where they're using them and Burns is one of them.
So I guess what I'm thinking is, you, you, you can already, you can say, I mean, you guys have done this. I, I don't think our bidding procedures, I hope our bidding procedures don't mandate that we take the lowest bid. As long as you have other reasonable criteria and justification, you could take a. IP video might not be your first choice because they might not have the same value or quality reference checks when you see the product and talk to the users. They may not tell you the same thing that to get out of Burns Security, in which case, for the variance of a small dollar percentage-wise, you'd go with the other one.
Sure. Yeah, so we, I mean, we'd have some options there. I've been, like I said, a few of these, I've been to the schools, checked them out. The IP video there, they do Lahey Clinic, Salem School District, so they're reputable.
So I'm not driving you, but you, you know enough from this bid right now to know who you want to go with, who you likely will go with, and you can tailor a key fob system to match them.
Sure. Most of these are bidding the same video management software. I think there's one or two that, that are different.
Okay, so he'll make the decisions that make sense. So we still?
There was a motion.
A motion from Mr. Zink, a second from Ms. Shelton, to move forward on the twenty-eight thousand one hundred dollars worth of recommended security projects. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposition? Then we're unanimous.
And we'll put on the agenda for May twelfth to have.
And I'll reach out to the chief and, and Wayne and update him. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
So we just did Ed specs tonight. Anything else with regard to facilities?
Nothing else with regard to facilities, other than Ingrid did send us a slightly revised timeline than the one that's up on the website. It just includes a couple more public sessions and I'll get that, I'll get that over to the office so we can get it up there. But it's, it's, it's pretty much the same as the one she showed us last week. So there's that. The. Banwell is going to have some people over there at both schools next week while school is out to verify existing conditions. And I today got here real early to the office and Penny showed me where we actually have a lot of old as-built construction drawings, which the architects drool at because oftentimes they don't have those, those get lost over the years.
Yeah.
So they can see what, what the bones are. So we have a lot of that stuff, so they'll be looking at that. A good thing they're going to scan it for us too electronically, so we have them, so, in, in a couple of spots. So that's going on. As we mentioned, I'm just going to, I'm going to repeat it again, the Ed specs are a, a work in progress. We haven't made any decisions on them. We had a first meeting, joint meeting with the facilities committee and, and the school board last week to consider just a draft of them. There'll, there's opportunity now for public input. We certainly welcome questions. You can go to the website and submit a question through the website, you can come to the meeting, you can call, you can email. What we talked about at the meeting tonight was having open hours over the next month or so. And we'll get dates out for that here, probably down in the auditorium, a couple hours at a time. Some probably at night, maybe, maybe a Saturday or two, if, if that works for people as well. Where either facilities committee members and or board members, along with the principals, will be there to answer people's questions about, about issues regarding the, the educational specifications. There'll be that opportunity. The Banwell firm will be holding a public forum, likely sometime in late May or, or early June. Also to consider the program. That's just one of several forums to come, but that's just sort of an initial one. So there's going to be plenty of opportunity for people to have input on, on these educational specifications. We haven't made any decisions. We just, we're getting a draft together on the first instance and talking about that so we can get it down to a point where we can have a meaningful discussion. Other than that, a facility is nothing right now, so.
Excellent. Again, I read an exciting school newsletter. Can't even, can't even speak. I'm so pleased to have a medium that is reaching somebody. It's reaching me at least, which is like, yay!
Well, you know, for that one, the focus was facility, so thank you to Mike for, for adding that blurb into there. You know, as you guys can see from the last one, I'm trying to add more stuff for recognition and staff and the students in the newsletter. And the one next week might be a little delayed because of the vacation, but there will be one out next week. Mike.
Are you doing it?
I'm writing the bulk of it and then Jason disseminates it for me. So thank you to him for his patience with me.
So is this something that ultimately our new superintendent will be authoring?
She can write like nobody could.
It would be the proven.
But I mean, that's the intent, I assume, to mainstream that.
I think, I think at this point, it's just a matter of building up the, the people that have subscribed to it, getting it out there in a variety of different ways, utilizing that as a vehicle to, to communicate more effectively. We've been talking a lot about the various ways, public forums, newsletters, videos like were done for the Warren article, all sorts of things to disseminate the information out to people. And this is one of those, those features at this point, so we're going to keep going with that. Mike asked that Penny and Jason and I sit down with Mike this morning to talk about the website and sort of streamlining it, making sure that we eliminate old stories and highlight things that need to be highlighted. As Mike said before, there's, on, on the front page of the SAU website, there's an option and a link to post questions if you want to for facilities and situations, a link to the facilities website, which is another great source of information with all the forms and everything on there. And what I have committed to do with Jason and Penny is when I submit the newsletter to Jason for dissemination, I will take a look at the website and make sure from a school board perspective and SAU perspective, what I know, if there's anything we think could be removed, just so that's getting looked at a couple times a month to look at that. And that's about it. The next one will also include the times for the drop-in meetings. And we'll go from there.
I like that term, drop-in meeting.
Drop-in meetings, we've, so.
It's a bit of an Alan Michaels.
Yeah, hi, Joe. We will quite, quite happily celebrate your delegation skills too, if that's something that you want to assign. All right. We continue forward with the principal search for Newmarket Junior Senior High. Any update you want to? We're, we're not going to consider a nomination here for another, another couple of weeks, right?
Well, you, by changing the nineteenth to the twelfth, that.
Twelfth is good or twenty-sixth is better?
Well, let's wait and see how.
See, yeah, we'll see. Let us know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be fine. We're, we're on target. I've released the timeline. We have resumes coming in. We'll go back and just check them out and, and do the, finish the process out the way we planned from the very beginning.
And when we have finalists, we're still talking about doing site visitations?
Yes, we've set up those dates. So.
Excuse me, we still have resumes coming in, is that what you said?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So that period was extended?
Yes, not reopened, but extended.
Until how, till when?
Twenty-fifth.
And Pat, I'll put that, I meant to mention, the timeline stuff will be in the news next.
Next newsletter, all right, yeah. No, we updated the timeline, so we should be in good shape. I'll know better by the end of next week, the actual dates of the visits, so that I can ask for parent and.
Perfect.
You know, volunteers to come in during that time day, during that time of the, the day visits, so they can come in and interview the two people, so.
Just, so if somebody, we sent out an ad saying you must respond by whatever. Did we re-advertise with the new extended date?
Yes.
I got you. Okay, so.
We took care of that last week. Yes, we took care of that. We're, we're all up to date, so we're in a good place.
You're at the microphone. Anything else you wanted to, no?
No, no. It's been a quiet week. No, no, everyone should have a nice vacation. I think tomorrow at both buildings, they have a lot going on. It's Wellness Day at the Junior Senior High. They have all kinds of people coming in to speak, do, do all kinds of things. In the afternoon, they have an assembly, which from all indications, going to be lots of fun. At the elementary school, they have Earth Day celebrations, so they have some live exhibits. They've got students doing painted rocks in rainbow colors for each grade level, so they can make a display out in the garden area, is my understanding. They're doing drawings out that will appear in the entrance way when you go in that have to do with saving Earth Day and things like that. So they've been very busy. Both, both climate and culture groups at the, both buildings have been busy organizing for tomorrow. And then they have a week off and then we come back and it's like, wow. It's in, in sight. But.
It's amazing when you live by this calendar.
It is, it is.
Cycles, it's like climbing, climbing up the slide and then, whoosh, sliding down the slide.
It's the slippery slope, as we like to call it at this point, yes. No, I, I, it's exciting. You know, and the weather's turned out really nicely for the next couple of days, so it's a good way to end one session. And we just started fourth quarter at the Junior Senior High School. That does not seem possible, but last quarter, so, but thank you.
Thank you very much. The council, the town council met last night with regard to the joint school board and town council meeting. And I got an email today from Dale Pike. Dale and Tony Weinstein volunteered to represent the council. And so to Al and Kim, I will respond to Dale and CC, you guys, that, that that's the committee. And I, I guess I would just throw out there, the conversation that we've been having is we think that we might do more than once a year. The charter directs that there should be an invitation to do it once, but we think that there might be value in doing it more often. I think that's been our consensus. But, but if we're going to do so, we need to have some game plan for how it's going to play out, whose rules, you know what I mean? How do you?
What the objectives are.
What are the objectives are. And then to the extent that the initial meeting can be somewhat organized, knowing that shared services and a facilities conversa, a facilities position is maybe at the top of our list. Go at it. And then when you guys can help coordinate, put together a date, all the better.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take on getting that, the date, and I, I, I envision it just the same way as we're going to have an open discussion for an hour or two, talking about what the options might be. Then we'll bring them back to the respective boards and get input as to whether that's an appropriate direction. And get this thing on the road.
Yeah, I mean, that's, rather than, I think what we'd said was, and I, I'm offering this up for public consumption, public consumption because, because we talked about it a little bit, coming and going. Rather than twelve people trying to sit around the table and figure out, well, how should we do this? If what we can have is a consent, a consent agenda, you know, the first step out, here's the, here's what we think we've got for a plan for how we can pull this off. So, okay, great. Good luck, good luck with that. So consistent with that, let's talk about committees for a quick second. I, I want to put together for, for the next year, but also for some posterity or for some, you know, future purpose. There wasn't, it never made, it didn't make the packet, it didn't even make the agenda, but I just want to. On the list of things that I think we should be staying mindful of is committees. We have a chair, we have a vice chair. Do we have today a school board rep on the budget committee who owns it? Mike, are you still doing it?
I went to the one, like, first, the last one they had, I guess I was unofficial, but I was there.
And so.
I should stay there, probably.
Do you like it? I mean, is that something, does it work Monday nights for you? I love it.
I mean, it's.
Oh, thank God.
No, it's, it's a good group, but I mean, it's, it's probably with a facilities thing, it's probably good to have that transition.
To have that transition. We ought to have an alternate. It's the one committee we have an alternate for. And I don't know if anybody wants to.
I'll be the alternate. What time does meetings start, Mike? Six?
Next one's May twenty-third.
Yeah, they, they, that was a debate, six-thirty or seven, but I, I don't know where they landed, but it's got to be pretty light for the, until.
Budget season.
Right.
Okay.
But then it, then it gets pretty heavy, so.
Have you had an organization meeting?
They did, yeah.
Who's chair?
Last time. You had to ask me that, Al.
Defaults again?
Yes, that's right, yep.
So on the list of committees we've had for some period of time, a school board rep on the Newmarket Public Safety Committee. And I don't know that that's a committee that sits.
It doesn't.
It doesn't? Okay, so I want to take it off the list for now. We'll put it back if it ever comes.
I think it comes up when, when there are issues.
Yeah. We are a, a member of the Seacoast Learning Collaborative, which is in the castles down in Brentwood. And so we, we have, our superintendent participates regularly in that and we send some students there sometimes for their programming and we use them for their special needs transportation services, et cetera. I'm on the list right now as our school board rep, a vast, a vast commitment of one time a year. They have an annual meeting and at the annual meeting, they, they look at their budget and so on and so forth. But all of that is really done by the administering superintendents. Normally, they bring the school board reps in to buy us lunch and, you know, and tell us all about the programming that's been going on for the last year. So we've got that one covered. Elizabeth has to date been our rep to the, the Seco School of Technology, and I think she's happy to continue doing that. We have had a staff development committee.
We have a planning committee.
This is for the PD plan for. This is for the PD plan, for the master plan, or is this?
You're invited to help with the master plan, you're invited to come to. We have once a month planning committees, I should warn you, they're at 6:30 in the morning.
Somebody, all right, so that's something, have you had a board rep at that in the past?
No.
Never have, really, so we've assigned one.
Probably four years ago, I think we have. We'd love to have someone.
Leave a question mark right there. We haven't had a bus committee, except for maybe when there was a big push to do a negotiation for bus services, but there's very few options. If you have a bus stop kind of gripe or concern that seems to not be able to be dealt with at your level, have you, at any point in the last, in your time here, have you at any point had a conversation with a board, board member to help you adjudicate that?
I think you already know that answer.
Yeah, all right, taking that off the list.
We've been fortunate.
We've had two, two people that have done negotiations. We don't have negotiations right now, but I'll leave it on the list, we just leave it on film, because we don't have need for it right now. We're going to have a health benefits committee of sorts, I don't forget what it's called, but the negotiated collective bargaining agreement with our teachers' union just created a committee that should consider our health insurance, all alternatives. One of the things that exists in Newmarket that I didn't really know is that we're with Cigna right now, we're with School Care, who is, who represents or brokers for Cigna, if you wanna call it that, and the way School Care works, there's a limited number of plans, and it's all or nothing. So that which the teachers have for health insurance plans, the rest of the district gets, period. And if, if they're not gonna move or don't wanna move or what have you, nobody gets to move, because we can't, we can't move to new plans or keep old plans when the teachers make their changes, so it's really restrictive, more so than I remember it being. I've had it with other districts, but it's going to be of some benefit, I think, to contemplate other vendors moving away from School Care into others. Maybe we do, maybe we don't, but that'll be something that that committee needs to consider. And we have, I think, two reps on that. Looking to see if I had made a note of that.
Would that committee also be addressing the Cadillac?
It's the Cadillac tax provision, trying to change that. I know Elizabeth had expressed an interest when we negotiated in sitting on that committee, and so I'm gonna put her name down. The question is, I'm pretty sure that we're entitled to another. I think it's, I think we set a six-member committee, three from the union and three from the, three from the board. I'll leave her name on it right now, the three might be the superintendent and the BA to go along with a board member. If we need another board member, we'll add it. One big one is policy, and I think we, we don't have a lot of time to tackle this right now, but I think in the next six months, the board needs to get back in the saddle and deal with our policy responsibility. And some of that might be going back and looking at some of our policies that were already on the books, and certainly looking at those that are coming down as a result of new laws, legislation, and federal changes coming from the School Boards Association. We have a membership with them, and they send us policies. But I really think that that, that, we ought to have some conversations. Somebody ought to vet that stuff with the superintendent, with members of the staff. One of the policies that's been floating past us has been one that says, you shan't use social media sites, right? I mentioned that. And I handed that to Chris and said, you gotta take that back and look at it, because I think we are using social media sites in the building, so we don't wanna have a policy that we already contradict. We gotta have that process vet itself out. It's gonna, I would recommend it have a board member, and so think about that one. Somebody wants to step in.
I'd be happy to do that, Nate, I think it's kinda...
Like policy? And, and we may find with the new superintendent that maybe that wants to be, at some points in the next year or two, more aggressive. Maybe there wants to be a couple of board members, there wanna be more conversation about that. For some boards, it's, oh, yeah, policy, and we take five minutes, but some of these are pretty, pretty broad, you know, you've seen some of the stuff that, geez, do you wanna have that, or do you not wanna have a policy that says something like that? So, so Mike, and then we'll talk more about that one as we move forward. School District Safety Committee. Is this, we have a joint loss committee.
Give it a joy, it's like, it's the same.
You guys don't need us on the joint loss. Unless there's a, I don't think the, I don't think labor demands it, I don't think I've had one on in the past, so we don't have that. I have no idea where we are with teacher evaluation, but I know Elizabeth.
Elizabeth?
Has been on it, and somebody was, and I was, I was, and then Matt was for a bit. We probably wanna put another one on, and I don't know where they went with the teacher value effectiveness or teacher evaluation.
They're working on the model, so it would start back up in the fall.
In the fall. So Elizabeth and maybe somebody else who wants to, and can, they meet normally in the afternoon right towards the end of the day. They, 1:30, 3 o'clock, right after school?
We usually meet after school, they don't meet until 6:30 in the morning.
Right after school, so think about that one. CIP is absolute, Al, sitting on CIP. Mike is sitting on facilities right now, we've got a facilities committee, to the extent that we have a communications committee. We didn't have anybody attend School Boards Association this year as a delegate. I, I can, I don't get me, I won't get started with telling stories and jokes about School Boards Association and the way that, that assembly in January really goes. It's, it's almost, it's mind-boggling.
Well, I think then that would be a good role for you.
Was it?
I mean, talk about somebody that really understands the language.
Oh, my God, it was so hard. The first year I went, I don't know that I do understand the language. Now you got me started. I sat in that meeting, they talking about Common Core, there isn't, there isn't an educator in the room, just a bunch of lawyers talking about how we wanna go to Washington and torch the White House or something. I was like, wait, is there gonna be a, is there gonna be an educator anywhere talking about this? And the only educator in the room, the only superintendent in the room is a guy whose district said no.
He couldn't comment.
So he, so he didn't, he couldn't comment on it, and I thought, why are we even talking about this? If you didn't even invite anybody, they could talk about it reasonably. I, I raised my hand, and I thought, what am I, nuts? I'm getting out of here. This is very well-intended people, school boards, but it was just funny that they were tackling an educational topic and had no educational, nobody in the room to talk to it.
After that rambling, have you put your name down next to that?
I did put my name down. Bless you.
I was, I thought that was a dodge or something.
I was gonna dodge, I was, it was definitely a dodge.
Nate, I'll, I'll take the professional development one. I'll get up at 6:30.
Phew, we owe you.
The person in charge of that might change it next year, but it works, because our people from both buildings can get there tomorrow.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for that. Any others that, we may, we'll have to add some probably, but standing committees, that's, isn't that enough? Enough standing committees. All right. We have some personal matters in front of us, I dealt with that one. In the packet, you'll find right here, nominations, is this for next year?
Yes.
Both of them? Both of them are.
Yep.
Yes.
Wow. Did we accept Lizzie, Lizzie Franciscini, he's leaving us?
No, she's, she will be, she is in the school district, she's teaching English. She has a certification in English.
So she's going from science to English? Same team or different grade?
No, she's, she's in the high school, that's what her certs in. We have a 12th grade language, English position. It's, we had to divide it up based on student interest and et cetera, so Lizzie's teaching things on Black Days, or Pam's teaching them on Black Days, one of the two, Black and Red, and they each have different subject areas, but it's not, neither one is full-time.
Okay.
So that's why Lindsay Malsbury's, and she's the person that's currently in for Lizzie right now.
Perfect. So for, yes, for, oh, yeah, there's the nomination, 1617. So we have, we have a nomination for Lindsay Malsbury, eighth grade science, for 1617. I seek a motion to accept it.
Do we have resumes? Got a trade there?
Yep.
Keep going, keep going.
Highly qualified science, K8, looks like, okay. Seek a motion to accept the nomination of Lindsay Malsbury for eighth grade science.
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none. On a motion from Mr. Zink, a second from Mr. Kennison, all those in favor of Lindsay Malsbury's nomination, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Then we're unanimous. And the second is for Mandarin Chinese for next year, Mark McDonald.
Is this a full-time position?
It looks like it.
Okay.
Is he dual cert, I'm looking for dual certs.
Is all he's gonna teach is Mandarin Chinese?
Wait, he's at middle school as well. We're doing middle school beginning.
Okay, so he's, he's gonna, we're gonna be able to fill six sessions, or six, six...
Really? Three and three?
Six out of an eight, you know, out of eight blocks, he's gonna be able to teach. Aaron Copeland was on the, okay, there's, huh? At one point, we talked about a dual cert where they might be able to teach some French or, oh, French? What are we, what are we, getting rid of French? French is on its way out. Gonna try to teach some.
Try to see if we could, he has a world language cert, so I would assume he's capable of bringing up that last piece that we talked about, because we have students that were trying to finish French. They're in like French 2, and they wanted to, wanted to finish with French 3, let's say.
Right. Well, I, I...
I'm sorry, but my question is, do we have six units of Mandarin Chinese for this?
No, because you'd have to take care of one of those units of French.
Which is going away.
Yes, yes, that's why we're replacing it. But we have high school Mandarin, and then we have middle school, 6, 7, and 8. They get a term of, it's one of their specials, so it's, it's beginning or introduct, I guess introductory would be the best way to put that, so that eventually when they get, we do this, we've done it with Spanish and French, so eventually a student gets to make a choice based on their briefer, you know, exposure, what they would like to take in high school. Is that a better way to put that?
So he's supposed to, he's supposed to seed his own program. He'll jump in and start with some high school participation, but he's also seeding at the junior high at the middle school.
Because that's their specials program that they rotate.
Yep, to bring them up through. All I know is we, we did stand here, we said two things. One, we were interested in the transition, the transition year or years, but the second thing was, good luck finding somebody who can teach Mandarin, so I'm pleased. One, two, three, four, you had five, it appears, five candidates quality enough so that you actually interviewed them. So good, I mean, that's better news than we thought, but we also knew that the schools, the colleges have got some, some programs that...
Some that are out, yes.
I look for a motion to accept the nomination of Mark McDonald for Mandarin Chinese at the junior senior high school.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? I have a motion for Mr. Kennison, a second from Ms. Shelton, to accept the nomination of Mark McDonald for Mandarin Chinese. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're unanimous. Melanie Maston has submitted a notice of intent to take advantage of a year of maternity leave. This is a, every time I go back and I say, this is a shall, not a may, right? It's entitled under the contract that it shall be granted, so, so this isn't really an optional question where we're saying, do we or don't we? And we will miss her, she's teaching sixth grade math right now, right? Oh, it says so right on the agenda, there you go. I thought I knew that. Seek a motion to accept the request for leave of absence from Melanie Maston.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Zink, a second from Ms. Shelton. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and we're unanimous. The minutes, I owe you minutes, I owe Penny minutes, and she's sitting at home upset with me right now. So the minutes are presented here for April 6th, 2016, excuse me, April 7th?
Make a motion to accept the...
Public, because I never gave you the non-public.
School board meeting is April 7th, 2016.
And a second?
Second.
So the, as you look at those real quick, the clarification is, we had the hearing in advance and went non-public, and came back from the non-public and went into public session, and we adjourned for a non-public that night, but mixed in there was, as a part of the hearing, we had non-meeting time where we, we referred to council. I, I've started writing it all up to make it make sense with the little worksheets that they give us for non-public, but I didn't get it to Penny in time for the packet, so your non-public minutes for the 7th will have to be on the next meeting. I have a motion from Mr. Zink, a second from Mr. Kennison. Any recommended changes or amendments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We are unanimous. You'll also have minutes from the 13th of April, that meeting of the facilities and the school board, those will be on the next meeting. The manifests went out.